Items of interest today include an update to the Cedric County COVID vaccine clinic hours. Those hours will change starting May 10th. The new times will be from 11:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. There is a new COVID vaccine survey out that we want to let you guys know about. You can access this by going to the COVID-19 page on the Cedric County's website. You click on Vaccine Information here, and the survey is here. And then, once you're in that survey, you just scroll down and follow the prompts through the survey there. The Health Department partnered with the KU School of Medicine to create this survey. Responses will help the Health Department plan future COVID-19 outreach activities. During yesterday's B.O.C.C. staff meeting, we heard an update from the Health Department about the Health Department's new Community Health Assessment website. You can find it by going to the Cedric County Health Department's page and clicking on the link or finding it at the very top. Here you will find important demographic information for our county. A rundown of today's meeting includes three items up for consideration of minutes. Commissioners, you'll also listen and approve several proclamations. One recognizing Correctional Officers Week, one recognizing National Travel and Tourism Week. You've got another item recognizing Electrical Safety Month, and a proclamation recognizing Public Service Recognition Week. That will be followed by several appointments. Under New Business Commissioners, you will hear items related to Cedric County Solid Waste Management Plans. You'll also consider a grant proposal from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services for Medical Nurse Triage Line, followed by an agreement with the City of Valley Center and the City of Park City to fund construction of road and drainage improvements. I will then lead you in a discussion and an approval on the federal platform agenda, and you will hear a report from the Boards of Bids and Contracts. With that, Chairman, I will turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Arkeem. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 5th, meeting of the Cedric County Board of Commissioners. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
In vocation, to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the public comments that came into the website. I believe there were two. Does anybody have any questions or comments about them? Commissioner Howell?
I just want to, I guess, share that we only got really one comment that made any sense. The one comment, the only thing they said was hut housing, and I don't see anything there, but there was one regarding EMS, and I just want to say, although this came into public comment, I've received plenty of other comments that are very similar to this one. So, I want to just say, I do hear you, and I appreciate you taking time to let the Commissioners know your thoughts on this, and I think that we are very aware of what is going on, and hopefully we'll find some solutions to that soon. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we'd receive and file the public comments through the portal.
Okay, I'll second that. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And I don't think we had anybody sign up to address publicly. Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of April 7th, 2021.
Commissioners, if it's okay with you, I'd like to combine A, B, and C, which is the minutes of our April 7th meeting, our April 14th meeting, and our April 21st meeting. If you've all had a chance to review those, any corrections, additions, or comments? And I don't see anything, so I will make a motion to consider the minutes, to approve the minutes of April 7th, April 14th, and April 21st.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item D, Proclamation Declaring National Travel and Tourism Week.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, the travel and tourism industry was a significant contributor to the U.S. economy and exports, and supported millions of hard-working Americans of all backgrounds. And whereas travel spending is down nearly $500 billion, costing the U.S. economy $1.1 trillion, and whereas the total number of travel-supported jobs fell by 34% from $17 million in 2019 to just $11 million in 2020, and whereas here in Kansas, travel spending was down by 33%. Federal, state, and local tax revenues declined by 27%, which helped fund public programs. And whereas the devastating losses have proven how critical travel is to our community, the U.S. economy, and the American workforce. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 8th, 2021, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to join in this special observation as we recognize the power of travel here in Sedgwick County and throughout the nation, and acknowledge the industry's role in bringing back our vibrant communities, restoring the U.S. economy, rebuilding our workforce, and connecting America. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion declaring National Travel and Tourism Week.
Okay, I'll second that. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And accepting on behalf of this proclamation is Susie Santo, President of Visit Wichita. Welcome.
Good morning. It's so great to be here in person, and thank you so much. You know, no doubt, this past year has been really difficult for the travel and tourism industry, but I will tell you, indicators are that we are turning the corner. Thanks to all of the work getting the vaccines out, we are seeing now through travel sentiment that as of just two days ago, our most recent national research indicates that 87% of American travelers are ready to get back out this summer and travel, and we are poised to welcome them back to Wichita. And there are two quick programs that we've got going on that I'd love to share with you about that will not only welcome visitors, but will help our residents get out and explore all the wonderful offerings that Wichita has. The Wicked Brew Tour is back by popular demand. This will be our fifth year. In 2019, we had 21 different states represented. People from 21 different states participated. You'll pick up your passport at any one of our participating breweries or coffee shops. Then, once you've visited 10 of them and gotten your little stamp, you'll drop it off at the Visitor Center, at Visit Wichita's Visitor Center on Main Street, and pick up your commemorative shirt. And I will tell you, these are very popular when you see them out there, so hopefully you all will participate. Also, we are launching a brand-new Attractions Passport. We have incredible attractions here with the zoo, and Exploration Place, and Cowtown, and more. So now, starting Memorial Day, you'll pick up your Attractions Passport. You'll get out and get six stamps throughout all summer long. You'll drop it off, and we are drawing for a grand prize that you're going to love. You can have the opportunity to win the Ultimate 2022 Attractions Pass for you and your family. You can go to every one of our attractions for the entire 2022, all year round. But wait, there's more. We'll be giving away prizes all summer long, so take a picture of you in front of your favorite attraction or any one of our wonderful attractions, post it on social media. So we'll be giving out prizes, a great way again for not only visitors but residents to get out and support these establishments that have been hurt so much over the past year. And finally, I'd be remiss if I just didn't say a couple of thank yous. What a year it's been. I want to thank Sedgwick County, I want to thank Adrian Byrne for being a great liaison with us, and we have welcomed back sporting events, reaching out to her and playing that role of connecting the event with a safe operating plan, and that feedback has been critical to getting that going again. I'd like to thank the County Manager, Chairman Meitzner, and all of our Commissioners up there for the hundreds of hours that you spent over the last year trying to keep our businesses open and keep us safe. We know that's played a critical role. And Dr. Menz as well, I'd like to thank him for all of his work over the last year. So get out, explore Wichita. I always tell residents to explore Wichita, like you're on vacation, and visit all these wonderful attractions. Thank you so much.
Susie, thank you. I'd just like to share that, how long have you been in Wichita, back in Wichita now?
You know, it's going on nine years.
Is it?
Hardly.
Well, I remember when I first met you, your first week on the job, and she came to us with a great resume and a great history of tourism and, from California, born and raised in Salina, though, right?
That's correct.
KU grad, but anyway. So she came back to Kansas, but her first week on the job, I didn't know her, barely had met her, and I bring in this crazy guy named Frank DiSocio to say, hey, we've got a quick window of about three days, we can get the bowling tournament back here, but we need it right. And Susie's looking at me, and I was in this room going, what did I just walk into? But you got on it, and you landed it, and we got that bowling tournament back, and then we got a lot of other stuff. And then, my second of two things is I just want to thank you this year for, you were a great help that's outside of your attraction of convention and tourism, because during the pandemic, there's many times when we needed to get a special message out to the restaurant, hospitality, hotel industry, and, of course, we have our website and our communication, but her way to communicate, her group really to communicate directly with these clients was incredibly helpful, guiding them to various websites for their applications, and I just can't thank you. It was a great, great help for you to take our message and get it to your clients and your customers.
Well, thank you so much, Chairman Meitzner. Appreciate the kind words, and it's been our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a great '22, or '21, whatever year we're in. Okay. Next up, so we already approved that. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, Proclamation Declaring Electrical Safety Month.
Okay, we have another, yes, proclamation. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas electricity helps in our everyday lives, and while we benefit tremendously from this vital energy source, there are many potential risks that accompany its use, including fires, shocks, burns, and other accidents that can lead to death and injury. And whereas hundreds of people die and thousands are injured each year in the United States as a result of electrically-related incidents, and whereas there is a real need to increase public awareness on electrical safety, educate our people in the safe use of electrical appliances and equipment, and to bring their consciousness to the importance of applying these safety practices, and whereas an Electrical Safety Month in May would amplify and reinforce consciousness on electrical safety, and whereas citizens are advised to protect their homes and families with the latest safety technologies such as arc fault circuit interruptors, ground fault circuit interruptors, tamper-resistant receptacles, extension cords in good working order, and urge all to install and properly maintain an adequate number of smoke detectors. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and its entire Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Electrical Safety Month in Sedgwick County. Mr. Chairman, you've heard the proclamation, I move that we approve.
Second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
And this is being accepted today by David Bishop, IBEW Local Union Number 271. Welcome.
Good morning.
David, welcome to the commission meeting.
David was unable to be here today. My name is Russell Kennedy, I'm Business Manager of IBW Local 271, so I'll accept this on his behalf. I would like to thank everybody for recognizing Electrical Safety Month. It is very important. Technology is rapidly advancing for safety. I also think that MABCD deserves accolades for making sure that they're staying on top of the current technology. So again, thank you very much for your time, and I recognize an Electrical Safety Month.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all you do, and tell all your members that we appreciate all their hard work.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Proclamation Declaring Correctional Officers Week.
Okay, we have another proclamation here. This is for correctional officers week, sorry. Sheriff Easter was on a couple of meetings with you yesterday, so this is to you and your group as well. Whereas in 1984, then-President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating, quote, "National Correctional Officers Week." The first full week in May has been recognized as National Correctional Officers Week in honor, to honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel nationwide. And whereas the dedication of these correctional officers and detention deputies who serve our community quietly, taking on the very difficult and dangerous duties, and whereas we would be unable to operate our adult juvenile detention facilities and community correction programs without the hard work of these professionals that staff these facilities 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And whereas Cedric County, Kansas is pleased to join in celebrating Correctional Officers Week, recognizing these men and women who risked their lives and served so diligently and faithfully. So now therefore be it resolved that I, the Chairman, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd to 8th, 2021, as Correctional Officers Week in Sedgwick County, and we encourage all citizens to honor and show sincere appreciation for the correctional officers who make it possible to keep the detention and correctional facilities safe each day, dated May 5th, 2021. I'll make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to receive, we have a couple of people.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much on behalf of the Department of Corrections and the 153 correction staff direct care that provides services to the adults and juveniles in our custody and care. We really appreciate this proclamation. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Glenda, and thanks for all the work that you do and your staff.
Good morning. Jeff Easter with the Sheriff's Office. Appreciate the proclamation and all of the support that each one of you have given the Sheriff's Office during some of these difficult times, and the fact that the correction officers and the employees and the staff members really appreciate you recognizing them, so thank you.
You bet. Thanks. It has been difficult past year, and Commissioner Dennis, comment?
Well, thank you. I appreciate both Glenda and the Sheriff being here today. We truly value what each of your departments do for our community. I also want to personally thank Sheriff Easter. He briefed my Citizens Advisory Board Monday night, did a great job. Sometime I do have a question, you don't need to answer it today, but after you left, several of them were interested in touring the jails, so I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but...
Oh, absolutely. Anytime.
Very good. Well, I'll start working that with our staff and see if we can set something up, but thank you very much for what you do, what your staff does. It's truly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks, Glenda, thank you again. Sorry I didn't see you in the back at the first of the meeting, so. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, Proclamation Declaring Public Service Recognition Week.
Okay, this is, we've had four proclamations today, this is the fourth one. Commissioner Lopez.
Okay, thank you. Whereas National Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated in May 2nd through 8th, 2021, across the United States to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees, and whereas members of Cedric County workforce are committed public servants who work hard daily to move the county forward by bringing their incredible skills, tireless dedication, and selfless service to a broad range of career fields. Whereas dedicated public servants in Cedric County serve the people of this community 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and every day, they provide the diverse services for our residents, providing government with efficiency and integrity, and their contributions strengthen our county, making profound differences in the lives of all residents. And whereas many public servants, including public safety professionals, healthcare professionals, and others, often risk their lives each day in service to the people of Cedric County. And whereas we all owe a debt of gratitude to Cedric County's public servants, now therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah Lopez, on behalf of Chairman Pete F. Meitzner, excuse me, and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through 8th, 2021, as Public Service Recognition Week in Cedric County, and call on all of our citizens to recognize all the accomplishments and contributions as Cedric County's public servants. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve May 2nd through 8th as National Public Service Recognition Week.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Accepting. I thought you were going to present it to yourself, Sarah.
Oh, yes. I'm unaware of that. Presenting is our County Manager, Tom Stoltz.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager here this morning with the honor to represent 2,787 full-time and 270 part-time county workers that represent Cedric County Government. Though this week of recognition occurs every year in the 1st of May, it is especially humbling this year to receive this proclamation on behalf of this group, from top to bottom, who were touched by the stress of COVID and what it did to our community. During this past year, county workers have had to rework business processes, often learn new skills on the fly under stress, often working without days off, often working grueling and excessive hours of overtime, all in the name of serving the people of Cedric County with the best services we could provide during this challenging time. This proclamation honors all county workers, including public safety, public services, administrative services, finance, HR, information and technology, public works, the Appraiser's Office, and all of our partner elected offices that make up county government. Thank you, Commissioners, for the recognition of this proclamation, and most of all, thanks to our great employees of Cedric County for all the sacrifice and service that they do to serve the people of this community. Thank you.
That's a very, very nice, thank you, Tom, for addressing that, and our sincere appreciation to all the employees of Cedric County and others in public service, so thank you again. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointment. Item H, Accept the Resignation of Marion Beck as Cedric County Payne Township Clerk.
Mr. Papun.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, Mike Papun, County Counselor. We have a number of actions on appointments today, some we can group together, including Items H and I, if it's the will of the Board. Item H is to accept the resignation of Mr. Beck, who no longer lives in Payne Township, I believe, and to replace him at the recommendation of Commissioner Meitzner, Chairman Meitzner, with Alan Everie. And we have prepared a resolution replacing Mr. Beck with Mr. Avery. This is in accordance with state statute, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay, and I think it's Mrs. Beck, not Mr. Beck.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right.
That's okay. Anyway, thank you for the service from Marion Beck, and they have been moving out of the county or out of the township, so had a chance to review, and Alan Everie will be a great addition to the Payne County Board. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, Resolution Renominating David Esslinger to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Items J and K are renominations by two of the Board members to the Wichita Airport Authority. Item J is a recommendation of Commissioner Howell to renominate David Esslinger, and Item K is to renominate, under recommendation of Commissioner Lopez, John Hennessy Jr. We've prepared resolutions, forward those to the City Council for those nominations, and ask that you approve the resolutions.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Yes, sir. I would like to just say that David Esslinger's done a tremendous job. He's a lifelong aviation enthusiast, he understands airport operations extremely well, so he's a very good appointment to this, and I appreciate his service. So I am pleased to renominate him. I don't know the person from District 2, but I would like to make a motion that we would adopt both resolutions, J and K, nominating David Esslinger and John Hennessy.
And I'll second that.
Okay. And Commissioner Lopez, any...
Well, now I feel like I have to say something here. Okay, so John, I talked to John, and he was really happy to be on this board, and he wanted to continue his service there, and so I very much appreciate that and look forward to his continuing service.
Well, thank you. I know Mr. Hennessy, and I know he was desiring to be, remain on there, so thank you for your decision. Okay, there's a motion and a second for both these appointees. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, Resolution Appointing Patricia Miller to the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Item L is Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Lopez, excuse me, appointment to the Animal Care Advisory Board, a 12-member board. Each Commissioner gets two appointments to this board, and we've prepared a resolution reflecting the recommendation of Commissioner Lopez, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Well, I really want to thank Patricia. I know she's got, the passion is there, and so I'm really excited that she's going to be on this board, and so I will make the motion to nominate Patricia Miller for the Animal Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, Resolution Reappointing Greg Sullivan to the Cedric County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Greg Sullivan has been an integral part of this board, and I'm happy to reappoint him. So I will make a motion to reappoint Greg Sullivan to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll second that. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, Resolution Appointing Vanessa Loft to the Cedric County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is another appointment to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. This is Commissioner Dennis's appointment to this board. This is a Board of 15 members. Each Commissioner gets three appointments to this board to help our developmental disabilities program and giving them advice. I ask that you approve this resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. It's my honor to appoint Vanessa Loft to the IDDB Board. It's a very vital board to our community, and she has indicated that she is ready and willing to go ahead and take on the responsibilities of this board, and I look forward to great things, so I make a motion that we appoint Vanessa Loft to the IDDB Board.
Okay, I'll second that. I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item O, resolution reappointing Madison Schreiner to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a similar disabilities advisory board, but this deals more with the aging population, the Aging Advisory, or the Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities Advisory Board. This is Commissioner Cruz's recommendation that Madison Schreiner be appointed to this board. We've prepared a resolution. It's in proper form. Ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Madison Schreiner is an absolute rock star in Park City at the senior center there. The programs that she puts together are very engaging, and it is my honor to reappoint her to this Advisory Council on Aging.
Okay. I'll second that. A rock star.
She is a rock star.
I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item P, accept the recommendation of the Cedric County Advisory Board for the onsite wastewater system installation and maintenance and sanitary services to remove Marvin Short from said board.
Okay. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution has been prepared to remove Mr. Short from the board. He no longer has his business. This is a board which has specific positions for different types of positions within the waste management sanitation programs. Mr., this position happened to be a hauler position, and since Mr. Short no longer has a hauler business, the board is asking that he be removed from the board.
Right. Okay. It's just a reminder that these board appointments are important, and we've had a bunch of them today, and if you cannot serve, or if you're absent from serving, things like that, then those advisory boards can come back to us and ask for removal. They usually are, they don't happen very often, but in this case, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the advisory board to remove Marvin Short from the said board.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item Q, adoption of 2021 Cedric County Solid Waste Management Plan Update.
Good morning. The famous Susan Earle line. Welcome to the commission meeting.
Thank you. Good morning. Good to see everybody.
And good to see you.
The Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires every county to update their solid waste plan on an annual basis. Our update is due in June of this year, so I'd like to review what the state requires with you. They want to include updated demographic information and the solid waste committee members. In our update, Tables 1 and 2 have that information for the cities and the memberships. Current solid waste system, Table 3 indicates which cities have contracts for solid waste collection, and if those include volume-based rates and curbside recycling. So you'll see that in the plan update that you've been provided, and also what they want is updated solid waste data. They want an extensive review of, are we covering all the aspects of solid waste? Medical waste, hazardous waste, all of that. So that's what I'd like to review with you this morning, is the data update. Currently, we have 16 businesses licensed to haul municipal solid waste in Cedric County. That's what's in business dumpsters or what we put out at the curbside as trash. So that's collected by private haulers and taken to the transfer station, which is privately owned also. That's located up at 37th Street North, just west of West Street. The amount generated in 2020 was over 401,000 tons. That's a slight increase from 2019, just 0.4% increase, so it's about level. We did discuss this with the transfer station owner with COVID going on, and they said that they did see a decrease in business trash coming into the facility, but they saw an increase in residential trash coming in and individuals dropping off their trash at the transfer station. That comes out to 4.24 pounds per person per day in our community, and that is below the national average. So we are doing all right there. The next table shows a five-year trend of what's gone to the transfer stations. I say plural transfer stations. There is one located south. It was not operating last year. It has been purchased by Waste Connections, and they're in the process of getting it permitted to open again, hopefully sometime soon. So you can see the amount of trash going to the transfer stations varied over time, and so has the amount that people recycle. In 2020, we had over 46,000 tons recycled. That includes drop-off at facilities and curbside recycling. This is a pretty big decrease from 2019, over 22%. And some of that's due to contamination that when it's collected, it's too contaminated to go through recycling, and part of that is, I think, people were just throwing it away and not taking the time to separate it out, unfortunately. This shows a five-year trend in the amount of material recycled that we receive, again, curbside and at the drop-off facilities. And we have two facilities where people can take material to drop off. One is International Paper, and one is Pro Kansas Mail and Recycling, which is a nonprofit organization. Information on where people can take this material is located on the Cedric County Solid waste also includes composting, and there are composting facilities. There's one located up in Park City at Evergreen, it's on 53rd Street North, just west of Broadway, and the others at Brooks Construction and Demolition Landfill. So over 8,000 tons were received at those two locations in 2020. Some small cities also maintain areas within their city limits for city residents to drop off their tree branches or grass clippings for composting. And there are two companies that offer curbside collection of food waste. One of those reported over 120,000 pounds of food waste collected curbside for composting. The other company never responded to our request. CND stands for construction and demolition materials. Those are usually considered inert materials such as bricks, two-by-fours, shingles, carpeting. That material can go to a construction and demolition landfill. It has different requirements for the municipal solid waste landfill. Over 166,000 tons were received and buried at the two CND landfills we have in our community. That's a slight decrease from 2019. And again, the five-year trend shows how that's varied. You'll notice 2017 and 2018's been kind of low on trash and construction and demolition. That's often reflected of the economy and the amount of material people are producing as trash. That's unfortunate that trash can also reflect the economic times, but it does. Getting into specific waste, the Cedric County has a household hazardous waste facility. It's located at 801 Stillwell. We're open Tuesday through Saturday for the public to drop off material or visit our swap and shop area. 2020, because of COVID, was a different year for us. We had less participants, just 16,533 drop-off material, but we had a record amount of material dropped off, over 1,700,000 pounds of hazardous waste. So each person who brought material in brought a lot of material in. Just to remind you of the type of material we're talking about, household hazardous waste includes cleaners, whether it's for the bathroom or kitchen, or window cleaners, oils, solvents, fertilizers, pesticides, all of that can come to our facility. It's free for Cedric County residents to drop off the material, and it's also free for them to use the swap and shop. If you look at this graph...
Susan, I was just going to mention, so COVID, everybody stayed home and cleaned out their garage.
Absolutely.
But that's...
We attribute the huge amount because the loads, people were home, they had free time. Why not clean it out? And I think that's what people saw at the transfer station, why you had more residents coming there instead of businesses, because they were closed down, but the residents were home, just doing it. And look at this, over 1,700,000, we were very busy. The blue graph is for the drop-off customers. The red graph is for the people who visited inside the swap and shop area, and I'll have more of that in a minute. And you can see the number of customers here, again, dropped because of the COVID. And here's two pictures of some of the visitors. So you can see we, trailer full, trucks full. In fact, the back of that pickup truck is down low from the weight, so we had a lot coming through this past year. We also work with businesses, conditionally exempt generators, or those who don't produce enough hazardous materials to be called a state-level or federal-level. They work with us because of our contract. We can give lower costs than they would if they just had a hauler come to their facility to take hazardous materials. So we had 45,000 pounds of materials from them. And once we receive materials at our facility, we separate them, the materials in good shape or not, can the labels be read, and then if they're in good shape, we put them in our swap and shop area for people to pick up for free and take home and use. On the right photo, you see five-gallon buckets of paint. We're mixing white, tan, and gray colors together. We sell those five-gallon buckets for $25, so the county makes some money on those, but it's good paint, and people come in and love it and take it immediately when we have it mixed up. And here you can see, inside the swap and shop area, even though we were closed quite a bit due to COVID, we had over 7,800 customers come in last year. By weighing the materials that goes out, we know we saved the county over $58,000 in our disposal costs had we gone through our contract to get rid of the material. So it's a win-win for everybody. Customers not paying for it, and we're not paying to dispose of it, and the product gets reused. So it's a very popular program, and we were closed quite a bit last year, but still, we had a good response. We had to clean the area daily. A lot of its materials touched by people picking it up and looking at it. We had to limit the amount of customers we had in the facility, but it worked out pretty well. We also helped other county departments. The drum you see there on the left contains the personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies from the cleanup and the finance department from the white powder they received. The contractor who worked on that contacted us and asked if we would take all of that PPE and cleaning materials to dispose of properly. So we agreed to do that. And there on the right, you see containers of kerosene. Through the CARES Act, the county had that for the COVID testing. They were out in the cold with tents, they were running heaters, and finally, someone contacted me about, how can we store this stuff properly? And I said, we've got this spot for you. Just bring it down to HHW. Because they were trying to find buildings, knew they'd have to placard them appropriately for hazardous materials. We had it ready. So as the county departments have needed that, they've come and collected the kerosene. And just this past Saturday, we worked with Wichita Police Department. They contacted me about, could we supply them paint for the cleanup on South Broadway to cover all of the graffiti that's along that area? So we provided 30 gallons of paint, those five-gallon buckets I talked about earlier. We gave those to the police department so they could work on that cleanup that happened Saturday. So we like to work with the community and nonprofits and help them out any way we can. We also have remote collection events that go out into the community to make it easier for customers who can't make it to our location on Stillwell. We had five of those events last year, spread out over the spring and fall. We collected over 250,000 pounds of household hazardous waste. We had record collection there, too, of people showing up and dropping off material. You can see the list of cities, Garden Plain, Clearwater, Spirit Aero Systems, up at Encat at WSU, on North Webb, and 53rd Street and Meridian Walmart. So it was quite a variety, had very good turnout for those events. County also provides bulky waste coupons. We have those each year for citizens where they have large items they can't put in the trash can, help them get rid of it, and cut back on illegal dumping. We provide these coupons for free for disposal up to 1,000 pounds of material at the transfer station. Over 57,000 coupons have been issued since 2012 when we started this. Average 32% of them get redeemed. Unfortunately, people see something for free, they may ask for it, then decide, oh, I don't really have a use for it this year, and it sits there. Due to budget, I don't want to give out more coupons than necessary, because I don't want to go over budget. So we're trying to find ways to get people to use those coupons more. Last year, you see only 22% were redeemed from the number we gave out. So we're trying to come up with new methods of getting those used. And special cleanup programs. Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department has sites out there where people need to clean up their yard, or the aging department, the same thing, for hoarding. And the people are willing to do it, but they don't have the funds. So we will provide dumpsters or vouchers for people to help clean up the property. At the bottom there, you see a before picture on the left and an after photo on the right. They provide the labor, we provide the funding of the dumpster, dropping it off, picking it up, and paying for the disposal. So we work with other county departments on those issues. We also work with the townships on illegal disposing of material. People drop off material in the roads, on the ditches, and we've collected over 2 million pounds since 2002. Last year was over 53,000 pounds. Where the townships will pick up the material, we provide a form for them, like a get-in-free form. They go to the transfer station to drop it off, and my department receives the bill. We also provide the no-dumping signs whenever they ask for them. And there's a special fund in the solid waste fee for debris contingency if we have a severe storm. The county has a tub grinder and an air curtain burner to help dispose of storm debris, that's tree limbs. We have worked with cities to take the tub grinder out there after ice storms or strong windstorms to help them get rid of the material. We grind it up, and then there's free mulch for the citizens. So that's an ongoing program. Also, Christmas trees. We have 22 sites across the county where people can drop off the Christmas trees for mulching. 10 of those are at Wichita City Parks, and the others in smaller communities, plus some cities have their own Christmas tree recycling sites. We've ground up over 99,000 trees since we started this in 2002. In 2020, we had an electronic waste event. We were planning to have it in the spring of 2020, but due to COVID, it was pushed off to August. So we had it at the Cedric County West Yard, had over 5,000 vehicles drop over half a million pounds of electronics for recycling. We worked with a contractor who's a zero-waste company. None of the material went overseas, all of it was recycled. And this is for computers and accessories, the monitors, mice, printers, copiers, cellphones, TVs, games, all of that associated material were brought to this event, and it was quite Waste Tire Collection, we just had back in April 22nd, 23rd, and 24th at the County West Yard. And you can see we have huge tires come in. I have asterisks there for the number of tires, because they're still out there. They should be gone by the end of May, with the company collecting them. The tires will be recycled, but we had over 2,500 vehicles collect tires. If you look here, we've been doing this for, this is our seventh event. We've been doing it a while. Through all of those events, we've collected over a million tires so far, not counting the ones collected this year. And the picture at the bottom there is from our tire event, and as you can see here, I have these pictures from this past tire event. Get large tires in, or small ones. So I like the MG Midget coming in with some tires strapped to the back.
Didn't have a picture of Joey on the tire.
I took my son to see it, and he loved the massive tires that he wanted to climb in and out of, so I had to pull him back a couple times, but he very much enjoyed seeing all the tires.
Well, and you got to see how many tires we had, and we had it quite spread out this time, so you had pickups and cars over here, people with trailers here, larger vehicles over there. And that's a picture from this past event, so constant flow-through of cars coming through. I'm glad you were able to visit. Another specific waste state wants reports on is medical waste. There's a company in town, Sterrecycle, that collects medical waste from doctor's office, veterinarian, hospitals. They collect that and take it to a medical waste incinerator in northeast part of the state. The county also works with the DEA program. We have sites at the Cedric County Zoo and household hazardous waste to take unwanted drugs. That just happened a week ago. There are three Walgreens, one in Derby, and, I'm sorry, and there's three in Wichita that take medical waste. But the county also worked with five cities that are listed there to put in med-safe boxes so people can come in, drop off their unwanted medical waste, controlled or not. As long as it's at a police station, we can take controlled substances. And we're working on expanding that program even more and having more locations this year and next. This past year, we collected almost 277 pounds... This past year, we collected almost 277 pounds of unwanted drugs. It's good to get them out of the house. We have public education programs where we hand out brochures, have information on the county website, sedgwickcounty.org. We go and give presentations, not as much this past year because of COVID, but we do help people as much as we can to get out the information on how to get rid of special material. And on our recycling guide online, you can click on the type of material that you're trying to look for, where you can take that, and it gives you the different options. The state wants to know what permits and grants have occurred since our last update. There have been two permits that have recently been approved by the county commission. One was Evergreen Recycling, and one was for Waste Connections. On Evergreen Recycling, up in 53rd Street North in Park City, they were modifying their current permit to also include construction and demolition material. They want to set up a 14-person recycling area to pull material out instead of being buried, but pull it out to be recycled. And the commissioners approved that on March 24th. Waste Connections Transfer Station has been receiving tires at their facility. This is a KDHE modification to call them Tire Collection Center. This is something they've been doing anyhow, and that was approved by the commissioners April 21st of this year. I will say, just yesterday, a business contacted me about a grant from KDHE this June, May 15th. They sent me two applications. It does not have to come before the commissioners for grant approval for the state, and we're having a special solid waste committee meeting next Monday to consider those grant applications for them to meet their deadline. So another thing we have in the plan is the solid waste fee. What you see is residential base rate is currently $7.80 per developed property. Non-residential ranges from $5.03 to $10. But like, these are per-year numbers. So that pays for all the stuff we've been discussing. And after my presentation today, the next item is the solid waste fee. So that's why I have dots. I would recommend you approve this plan update that includes the information and everything we've been working on this past year, and that we'll continue to improve for the coming years. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And also note that any decisions that are made, such as the grant application, the solid waste fee, when we get the final tire number, will be placed in the plan update that's sent to the state in June. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Got a few questions here. Can't recall who this first. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two real brief questions. One is, one of your first slides, you say that there are 16 businesses licensed to haul hazardous waste in.
Non-hazardous waste.
Say that again?
Non-hazardous.
Non-hazardous, yes. Who licenses those?
The county has a license. It's a small fee per business, and then like a dollar per truck to give them a sticker. And also, the city of Wichita licensed the haulers within their community. So when it goes to the disposal facility, they look for those stickers on the truck to make sure they're properly licensed.
Good. And also, towards the end, you talk about this Sharps Medical Waste Stericycle. They bring, they go around and collect it here in the community, and then they bring it to you, and you dispose of it?
No. They collect it in the community, and they have their own transfer station here, a medical waste transfer station. And then it's taken to an incinerator up in Kansas City.
Okay, so we're not involved in it at all? We just know that that's how that medical waste is being disposed of?
Right. The state wants to make sure that that niche is checked and that is being taken care of. So Stericycle fills that for our community and takes care of the medical waste. And when you go to the doctor's office and see those red containers in there, or the dentist's office, that's what they're picking up.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Susan, for being here today and presenting this to us. A couple of questions I have. So over the last couple of weeks, well, months really, I've received a number of questions because the landfills are in my district. And a lot of people drive along K-96 and see a lot of the litter that is along the highway. There's also, now that the landfill is now, you can actually see all of the trash from the highway. And so there's a lot of concern from residents. And I wondered if you could just address how this is being handled, and who is responsible for picking up highways of litter that has blown from these landfills?
Sure. You're referring to what's called CDR North, which is on the south side of K-96, west of West Street. And Kansas Department of Health and Environment has regulations for this construction and demolition landfills, requiring them to cover the material that's buried within, I think it's 120 days of when it's received, or a certain volume of material that they receive. Once it's put in place, they compact it, but unfortunately, with some of the winds we have, it does pick up material. Fences may not be high enough to catch it, and it blows out. The facility's responsible for a half-mile radius to pick up material from their facility. To the north is another construction and demolition landfill. That's Brooks Construction and Demolition owned by the city of Wichita. They have a much larger working face than the one you see there along K-96, but it's on the opposite side, so people don't see that. The litter along the highway, Kansas Department of Transportation works with different detention facilities and actually use some of them for labor on collecting the waste along the highway. I've driven recently Highway 254, 235, 135, K-96. Everywhere you go, you'll see litter. Some of it, I've been following vehicles and see a hand come out and drop it, or stuff blowing out at the back of a pickup truck. It's unfortunate, but litter's all along the highways. And the state highways, KDOT is, but right near those facilities, those people are. I have pictures of crews from the CND landfills picking up along there just a week ago. When the winds are blowing as high as they are, they don't go out, because as soon as you pick up an item, it's blown out of your hand, it's a fruitless effort. But when the winds die down, they go out there to pick it up. It's unfortunate. They have been covering that face you're referring to, the working face, but what they've been trying to do is, the state regulations require for the footprint of that landfill cell, you have a certain slope, and they're filling the material to meet that slope, cover it up, and then grass will be planted on that. So pretty soon, it won't be, the ice orb, I'd say two-thirds of it's been covered right now from what it was about three weeks ago. So they have been adding dirt to it.
There's still quite a bit there. And I know that that's, you know, it is an ice orb. But the other, the other question, and you and I have discussed this, but I'd like to discuss it here in regards to vehicles who are entering the landfill. And you had, you had talked about requiring covers for those, because, can you, can you just discuss it here around trash that is blown from vehicles who are depositing their trash at the landfill?
When we were developing the regulations for the construction and demolition landfills and the transfer station, we looked at a requirement saying that all vehicles entering those would have to be properly covered, so the material would not slip out. And that was shot down. And it was said that this is really an enforcement issue, whether it's police department, or sheriff, or KDOT, that they need to go out and better enforce that there are covers placed on the vehicles. And I will say, when we had our recent tire event, KDOT did show up at it to watch to make sure that the tires were properly tied down. And I know that they stopped at least one vehicles, educating them on how they should be tied down instead of what they had come in. But, you know, I noticed most of them had straps around the tires, through the tires, and were doing a good job of keeping them tied down. But occasionally, people don't do the best job, and I'm sure we've all seen stuff flying out of vehicles as you're driving along the road.
Right. I mean, I would assume most, most folks do their best to tie things down, but things happen. So in a different sense, because this, we're talking about environmental here, that's really what it boils down to. In 2019, we as commissioners, we allotted $250,000 to do an energy audit. Now, I understand we're talking about trash, and energy is a different thing. But where are we at with the funds that were allotted to do the energy audit? And how much is it going to cost to do the energy audit? And is there anything left over that we could then maybe transition or discuss about ways to host more collection events? Or, because these things aren't cheap, right? And so I'd like to have an update, maybe not right now, but I'd like to have an update as to where we're at with the $250,000 that was allotted in 2019 for an energy audit.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have budget meeting this afternoon, and we'll have an update for you then, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you for being here. I appreciate all of your quick responses to all the questions to me and to constituents in regards to the trash along K-96. And thank you for physically going out and witnessing it yourself. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, and I always enjoy having you present some of this information. It's certainly interesting. I do have a couple of questions. On one of your slides, you talk about the 46,000 tons of being, of materials being recycled. And a few years ago, we talked a little bit about the fact that some of the recycling supply lines were interrupted because of international situations going on. Where does this recycled material go today? And how's it being utilized? Is it actually being recycled? I guess that's my question.
It's all handled by private industry in our community. The stuff is picked up on the curb side, is taken to the transfer station up at 37th Street, and there's a special area set aside for that. Then it's transferred to what's called a material recovery facility up in Hutchinson. And there it's sorted, where people sort it by hand and mechanically, you know, magnets can be used to pull steel out of it. So there are different ways of handling it, depending on the material. And then the company looks for markets. Quite often, for example, aluminum may go to Tennessee, where it's recycled into more aluminum cans. Newspaper could go down to Mexico where it's recycled. So it depends on their markets, and that's why material recovery facilities usually refer to as warehouses, because they will keep material on-site, waiting for the commodities market to increase before it's shipped out. So they make the most money. And unfortunately, occasionally, you hear about a fire at one of these facilities. There was one nationally about three weeks ago that burned a facility down with all the recycled paper in it. But the, you're right, plastic especially has been hurt with recycling nationally and internationally, instead of going over to China. China cut off markets worldwide. So you're basically down to number one, and number two, plastics are the most recycled right now, and the other numbers are not.
So does the, does this material generate money in terms of, is this a commodity that they sell, or is this something they, the haulers, I guess, would charge a fee, I guess, to cover the cost of recycling? How is that done financially?
Financially, especially for curbside recycling, there's a fee there to pay for the truck, the driver, the fuel being used, to come by for the convenience of having it picked up curbside. So you always have a fee associated with curbside recycling. The drop-off facilities, like Pro Kansas Miller and International Paper, there's no fee charged. Pro Kansas, when you go in there, they have the individuals, you know, put the paper here, put plastic over there, cans, glass. So they separate it when they bring it into the facility. International Paper basically wants cardboard and paper material brought there. Then those companies follow the market and see where they can take the material. I know Pro Kansas Miller has had a hard time finding good plastic marketing.
Okay. Just a couple of other comments here. So you talked about some of the composting facilities in 2020, there was 8,000 tons received at two locations. Do you know if those locations charge a fee to drop there, or how's that?
Yes, they, they both charge a fee. The one that's construction and demolition landfill at Brooks, if someone's been doing land clearing for development, that material's taken over to the compost area instead of being buried with the construction material. And that way, it can be composted. The fees will vary over time, so we always suggest people look at our website, call first to see where they want to take the material.
I live in the city of Derby, and I know Derby is one of the places that you, they do actually have a tree limb drop-off area, but you do have to live inside the city to drop off. And if you don't live in the city, you can still pick up the mulch that they create from shredding that material. But generally speaking, that's primarily a service for people who live inside the city. You pay city taxes.
There are a few cities that do that, as I mentioned. Hayesville is one of them as well. Bell Air did, I think they're having a location issue right now on where to have that. So this, it varies from city to city, and I'd recommend people contact their city and see if they offer that.
I'm getting to a point why I'm bringing that up. I'll get to that in just a second. You know, I'm torn right now between, I mean, there's a nice, a lot of, a nice number of services provided through the solid waste fee. I don't know how much every Sedgwick County citizen understands that they benefit personally from the, from these programs. I think there are some people who use these very much, and some people don't use them at all. So I guess I would make a point that there are some people that are certainly benefiting from these programs, absolutely, and there's others that basically don't realize the benefit, even if they have one at all. We don't know what they, what they do necessarily. But I guess my, my point is, generally speaking, I think the public supports these types of programs, and they, although we call it a fee, it's a fairly small fee. I mean, use the word tax. It's a tax that provides government services. Most public, I think, that we talk to probably do, you know, generally do support these programs, and they, they would not want to see that tax cut, see these programs eliminated. Because I think when you eliminate these programs, if you did, we would see an effect in the community of hazardous materials, tires being dumped along county roads and things like that. So with that in mind, let me get to a point here. Well, let me, let me make one other point before I get to my final point. For example, the tire, the tire event, and you don't have the numbers for 2021 yet, and I don't think we did this in 2020. So in 2019, you have the numbers, and if you divide out the number of tires from the number of vehicles, we had 67.7 tires per vehicle on average. I don't know about you all, but that's a lot of tires. And I guess my point is, this appears to be something more than just a resident that's paying these fees, that's using the service. I can't explain how you get to 67 tires. And every one of these, if you divide that out, you get a number very similar to that. So 67 tires is a lot. And, you know, I, I don't know what's going on, but certainly, there are some people out there that are benefiting, probably, maybe a business in some way. I don't know, I don't know how they would do that, but, you know, saving $2 when you buy new tires, and they say the disposal fee is, you know, $2 a tire or whatever, some people will say, no, I'll just keep my tires, and I'll store them in my backyard until this event shows up. But that would be four, or eight, or 16 tires, or whatever it would be, you know, in a very, in a year that you might replace a lot of tires. I don't know how you get to 67. That's, that number surprises me. And it just tells me there's an abuse by some people to, to do this on the, on the, you know, on the, they're taking the tax money from other people to benefit themselves. You want to comment on that?
Yep. The first day of a tire event, we have four businesses and governments, since everybody pays the fee, and that's where you see your largest loads come in. I know I saw numerous cities, airport authorities, people like that, come into these events. And some of those are maybe from their own vehicles, or others are illegally dumped on their properties, and they're bringing them in. It's hard to differentiate to say, we say you can't be a business that receives money for taking tires. But beyond that, we don't play cop and say, no, you can't bring it here. We suspect you've been hoarding these tires just waiting for the event. But I can agree that that's probably happening, but...
So a tire business out there potentially gets dropped their tires for an entire year or two until this comes back up?
Like I said, if they're in the business, we don't want them coming in, and we have stopped some of those. But if it's not a firestone, I'm just using them- But if it's not a firestone, I'm just using them as an example, that we know that they're getting money for working with tires, they're not supposed to use this as a benefit.
Again, I'm not going to presume any evil by anybody, but it's possible they're actually collecting the fee and then keeping it and actually using this event to discard the tires. I mean, it could happen, so...
Now, KDHE does have regulations on how many tires a business can hold on a site at any one time. And they should be going out checking those to make sure they don't exceed that number.
Okay. So, where am I going with this? You and I have talked numerous times over the years. And since we don't get a chance as commissioners to talk in public open meetings very much about these types of topics, I want to raise this issue once again. I don't know how this is different or similar to other programs we already have. But I would say that Central County as a whole, let me ask a question. How much of the, how much of the tree limbs, I don't know if this number includes the 401,000 total tons of trash, does that include tree limbs that are being disposed out there as well? Or is that just?
Anything people bring, yeah.
Anything. So, it would include that as well. I would tell you that. I think that there's one thing that seems to impact almost every single resident in this entire county, that is, they have tree limbs to get rid of periodically. And when you have them, usually, they end up in the trash. And they end up being, going to the transfer station. So, you know, trying to reduce solid waste, it just seems to me that it takes a little bit of vision and leadership for us to add to the offerings of programs here. Yes, it's growing government. But I think that if you did this in a very careful way, it actually potentially could be revenue neutral. And one thing, one thing we don't do, which I think we should do, and I've said this before, I think we should actually invite people to pay for some of these services voluntarily. If they want to, you know, put $10 in a donation jar, as long as we can account for that cash, I think lots of people who benefit from these things, whether it be at the e-waste event or the tire roundup, or a household hazardous waste event, if you asked them to provide a donation to this program, to sustain these programs, I think you'd find a lot of people would be glad to do that. I know the cash management is a challenge, but I think we should solve those challenges. I do think that we ought to have a countywide limb drop-off site. And it should be 365, 365 days a year, or close to that. I think maybe holidays or weekends might be, maybe we do it over a Saturday, but not every single day of the week. But the point of this is, is that I think if we don't have vision and leadership, we're never going to get there. And in the meantime, these are the, these are the types of things that people want to recycle. And there's a value in recycling them and minimizing our solid waste. I think people would appreciate the program. And so, I think it's upon us to develop a program that's revenue neutral and create a new service for Central County. Let me add to that. Mattresses, these bulky waste coupons do not cover mattresses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how much is, how much does it cost to get rid of a mattress today at one of these places?
It depends on the facility. I know Brooks is $10 a mattress. Other places might be $30. And I'm saying per piece, for, per mattress and per box springs.
You're telling me the CND landfill will take a mattress?
Yes.
Okay. That's surprising to me. But most people, I think, end up trying to take them to the transfer station. And it's, to get rid of a box spring and a mattress together is $60.
Yeah.
And that is enough money that a lot of people are saying, I won't do that. And in some of my community, there are people who will store these up in their backyard because they don't have the money to dispose of them. And this is causing issues with animals and insects and things like that. It's not a good, healthy situation. Sometimes these mattresses end up on county roads. And I've even seen them on I-135. So, the reality is, we have a community-wide problem that's developed around this fee. And you and I have talked about having an industrial shredder that could take bulky waste furniture, including mattresses, and shred that and then separate that for recycling. Again, it takes vision and leadership. And I think this could be revenue neutral if we simply open our mind up on how to make this happen. So, I think it's upon us as commissioners to come together and find a way to solve this problem. If we don't solve it, it's going to continue to get much worse. And, you know, if we believe that the tire roundup is good and the household hazardous waste is good and the e-waste collection is good, why are we not dealing with these issues that are right now plaguing this community because we're not solving those problems? So, either we're going to, either we should do it and do it well, or we shouldn't do it either, we shouldn't do it at all. And my point is, we picked a middle point, which right now, I'm having a hard time defending this middle point that does some things, but doesn't do the things that are obvious in front of us that need to be solved. And this is a problem I've been talking about now for, I think, four years. And so, some of these commissioners haven't heard this before. I don't know why we are not moving forward with some type of plan to move this idea forward. I appreciate what the services, the services we do have. I think we're doing pretty good. I think, again, generally speaking, the public supports these things. And I appreciate all you do. But I just think we need to expand our vision just a little bit further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez?
Well, he kind of hit part of that. But I've had quite a few people reach out about mattresses. And they had mentioned in 2019, there was a neighborhood cleanup crew who came through and they were able to just dispose of those. Is that something that we could implement again? Like, oh, something annually similar to what we do with tires? Or what would that look like if possible?
As far as, I just had HOA contact me the other day about, could we come out and collect hazardous waste at their event? And I said, unfortunately, no, because then we'd be spending all of our time at these events. But that we have a planned event near them for one of your district's events coming up. And gave them that information. The mattresses used to be the same price as everything else. If it was in the truck being, and it was dumped, it was part of the trash, there was no additional fee. It was a few years ago that the facility started charging extra per mattresses because they were developing problems with the equipment running over mattresses at the final disposal site and getting caught up in the equipment and causing $80,000 in damage. And so, they decided, well, we're going to try to recoup our investments in damage and start charging per unit, mattress or box springs. So, that's, this has been a recent development. And we could look into, you know, what the county could do. I did work with Commissioner Howell and checked. There are grinders available that can handle tires and mattresses. There were about half a million dollars for the grinder. And then, you get into the, where do you put it? You need a spot large enough for trucks, you know, trucks to come in or lines. So, you get into property and buildings and other equipment and staff. So, it compounds the issue as to how much money do you spend on this issue? It's something we can look at, all of the options available and see how we could handle this. But if we collect the mattresses, we're going to be paying 30 bucks a mattress when we get rid of it. So, it's going to be an expense. No matter how we address this, there will be a cost involved.
And how does someone go about getting one of the coupons that you have given out for bulky waste?
When we have the coupon program, I always do it after a big event to see how much money's left in my budget. Because you never know how many tires are going to be brought in or electronics. So, after that, we will advertise it on Facebook, in newspapers, online. We try to get that message out. And then, the people can go in, just log in, sign up for it, and the coupons mailed to them. And we usually have around 6,000 coupons a year. And that's why I hate seeing any of them not be used, where people sign up and just set it aside. We like to really get it out there and get it used for what it's intended for.
Do we have any idea when that'll happen this year?
Usually, it's in later summer and into fall.
Okay. Right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate everything that you do for keeping our environment clean.
Thank you.
And a very minimal cost is what goes into that throughout the community. And the entire community does benefit from it because it keeps that out of our environment, whether it's tires in the ditches or hazardous waste that somebody pours out. It's an important service. And I don't have a problem with passing that on to the entire community because the entire community benefits in the long run. Now, let me address a couple of issues that have been brought up. I've had to cut down five pine trees this year because of bores that killed my pine trees. And I haul them out to Brooks landfill. And as long as you don't have big loads like I do, it's like 20 bucks to get a load in. Once you fill up a truck and trailer with a tree, it's about 40 bucks. But still, that's not that expensive to take it out. And there is an avenue for our community that is already provided. And I hate to see us develop another duplicate service that's in competition with that, to just dispose of trees and tree limbs and so forth. That service is available in our community, is what I'm trying to get to. And I've made, obviously, several trips to Brooks landfill to get rid of five trees. And there's a pile of mattresses out there. I don't know what they do with them later on, but they take them because I see them when I'm driving in. So, that service is available in the community before I spend a half a million dollars to buy a grinder to get rid of them and then have to figure out what to do with the byproduct of that, with the springs, with all of the bedding and everything else. I don't want to go in competition with something that's already there. And it will also keep the cost down for the hazardous waste fee that we've got. So, I see that Commissioner Howell wants to refute my discussion. But I think that I am not willing to raise the fees above what they are now in order to be able to add a couple of more services that are already available in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I may just say, you mentioned the mattresses at Brooks CND landfill. They have been working with a detention facility in another county where the inmates actually work on those mattresses, tearing them apart and recycling pieces of them. So, not on every mattress. Some mattresses are too far gone for that to happen. But I know they've been doing that.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Just one comment in response to Commissioner Lopez. If we did have an event and that we had to pay that fee, I don't think we'd get a discount necessarily. We would pay the same fee, correct?
That's correct.
And so, it's roughly, it's just, and I don't know if we would go to Brooks or if we go to, I don't know how we would do that. But this is at least $10 per mattress for us to dispose of those. Could be 30, depends on how we did it. And we would use property tax dollars to make that, to do that, correct?
Correct.
So, it's property tax dollars. Okay. I think that's important to note that. Second of all...
With a solid waste fee, it's on the property tax, yes.
Right. Okay. Right. Okay. As long as there's budget available.
That's correct.
So, with respect to the competition, I understand, I don't know how much Brooks is a for-profit company.
It's City of Wichita.
City of Wichita. So, in terms of competition, if we reduced how much solid waste went into that facility by recycling that, I don't know if they, I don't, I really don't think that Brooks actually recycles anything from those, from those things being dropped off there. The mattresses, I assume, are just buried.
Well, as I said, some of them go to a detention facility where they do recycle some of it.
Again, if we shredded them, you could separate the materials and parts of that can be recycled if, once it's shredded. And by the way, the very same shredder that you said can also shred tires.
That's correct.
That might reduce our cost in terms of our tire roundup. We would not have to necessarily pay the same higher rates to dispose of those tires through a contract. We could actually process those. And once they are shredded, then we can actually use them for cover at the, at the landfill. They actually have a value once they're shredded.
Correct. Whether it's being used for crumb rubber, or as you mentioned, some landfills use it for the daily cover where, at the end of the day, a landfill is required to cover the material. Then they can scrape that material off the next morning, put more. Yeah, sooner or later, you lose the material as part of the burial, but...
So, let me just say this. I believe there would be some cost savings by having a program. I don't think that the competition issue is really an issue. I do think we could do this with revenue neutral strategy as long as we were creative and did it that way. So, again, it takes vision and leadership for us to go forward. If it was a fee increase or a tax increase, if this hurt the private sector and if this, you know, we talked about the problem's already been solved in the private sector, or should say, by Brooks landfill. I don't know that I agree. Because again, I'm seeing mattresses everywhere. And again, I think that this mattress issue is going to get, is going to get a lot worse. We had a, an event out on 21st Street, a, what do they call that? An emergency management event out on 21st Street just the other day. And I had to pass a couple of mattresses just to get to the event. They're on 21st Street. And I thought to myself, this is just, this is a consequence of the $60 fee that most people are looking at that and saying, I don't want to do that. And again, three or four years ago, this wasn't a problem. We did a community cleanup in one of my communities a few years back. And there were hundreds, if not maybe more than 1,000 mattresses that showed up at that event. And so, I wondered, where were these mattresses? They're in backyards. And people are storing them in places because they can't afford, they don't have a way to get rid of them. And especially now, they can't afford to get rid of them. So, I do think it's going to be a growing problem. And all I'm saying is that with vision and leadership, we can solve this in a revenue neutral way. Thank you.
Okay. No more comments? I make a motion to receive and file?
No.
Oh.
And send on to Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
I'm sorry?
To approve it and send it to Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve it and send on to the KDHE. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. And my compliments to your graphic designer, especially on that last picture.
Steep also are educators and they've caused a problem at landfills.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Have a good day. Right. Next. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item R, adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste fees for 2022.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Carly Sanchez, Principal Management Analyst with the Budget Office.
Good morning, Carly.
Good morning. Since 2000, Central County has imposed solid waste fees, which provide partial funding for the program Susan Earlewine just described for you. State law provides that if the county chooses to impose a solid waste fee, it must do so before July 1st for the fee to be effective for the following calendar year. The action before you today is to impose a solid waste fee for 2022. The fee varies according to classifications. Residential property owners pay a fixed amount per dwelling unit and commercial and industrial property owners pay an amount based on their waste generation characteristics for their particular businesses or parcels of property. The resolution proposed for 2022 suggests a range of fees that are a 10 cent increase per tier over 2021 fees. The residential fee increases from $7.80 to $7.90. Tier one increases from $5.03 to $5.13. Tier two increases from $6.71 to $6.81. Tier three increases from $8.39 to $8.49. Tier four increases from $10.07 to $10.17. And tier five, which are large multi-use properties such as the malls, increases from $6.71 to $6.81, times the number of business units within that parcel of property. Those fees will be collected through the county's property tax bills. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. If not, I recommend you approve the resolution that is before you.
Okay. Thank you. I know we've all been briefed as well on this, but thanks for the presentation. Carly, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I've talked to Lindsay about this. I just want to make sure that the public is aware. The Treasurer's Office got involved, our legal department got involved, I was involved, our appraiser's been involved. We had an individual that was very upset that the $7 showed up as a fee on the property tax bill. And I have talked to everyone about this. And I have talked to everyone about this. And I think it's probably the most efficient way of getting this fee because it isolates exactly how much we get. We don't spend more than that. We don't make a profit off of it. We don't roll it over into the general fund if we've got anything left. This fee is dedicated to hazardous waste. We could drop it and add it into our general fund and raise everybody's taxes that way if we wanted to, but this points out exactly how much that we're going to collect and exactly how much we're going to spend on this project. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware that yes, it's going to show up for whatever we vote for today on their property tax bill as a fee. And it will be isolated just for this project. So we spent an awful lot of time on $7 and some cents. As I said, we've had four or five departments involved in this and it is the most efficient way of doing business for the county. So I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the solid waste fees for 2022 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks again. Thanks, Carly, for all your work. And again, Susan, thanks. Good to see you again and we'll see you around. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item S, consideration of a grant in the amount of $1,000,001,000 from Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services for Medical Nurse Triage Line.
Good morning, Elena.
Good morning, Elena Moreno, your Deputy Director for Emergency Communications. I come to you all today to ask permission to apply for a grant from the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services that will be awarded to 40 centers nationwide with a maximum amount of 1.175 million per award. And we would utilize this grant to establish a nurse line that could be utilized on low priority medical calls that may not need an EMS response but needs some type of assistance. They would be able to set up appointments for those people or give them other resources. This grant will allow the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services the opportunity to collect data to ensure maybe the nurse lines need to be established or expanded to reduce an appropriate use of ambulance services, which may in turn increase efficiency in EMS systems. It would also allow us the opportunity to collect data to find out if a nurse line is something that we would like to move forward with after the termination of the grant after two years. If awarded this grant, we would plan to outsource the nurse line to an outside vendor that is already established as a successful nurse line in order to collect information to see if we would want to withstand that after the grant period. Just to let you all know that transferring of this would be completely optional based on the caller. It would be for low level type calls and we would do a warm transfer to the nurse line, which would mean that we would go ahead and give the information to the nurse line instead of having the caller repeat all of that information. We would also send them an ambulance if they wanted it. So if they get to that nurse line and decide that they want an ambulance anyways, they could be warm transferred back to our 911 center and then we would send them an ambulance. We have 2019 data that shows that there were over 4,700 calls that would have been sent to the nurse line or been eligible to be sent to the nurse line, which is about 6.6% of our medical calls. And so that would be things like an allergic reaction, maybe somebody has a spider bite or they're having a rash, but they're not having any other symptoms. Maybe it's somebody that fell yesterday and was needing to get to a doctor but didn't have the services or the means to do so. And so this would also help 911 because it would help us with resource management of the ambulances that we have to send to medical calls. So I would recommend that you all give us permission to apply for this grant and also authorize acceptance of the grants if we were to be awarded. And the chairman has designated to sign all of the necessary documents and authorize the establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? I don't see any as of now, but Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Just thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify, when I talked with you a couple of days ago on this, I believe you said that it would take around six months to get this up and running. Is that?
Yes.
About that, right?
Yes.
Does the two years start when we approve this or does it start when we're basically operating, begin operating?
It would be, the two years would start as we were awarded, which is in September. And so once we get that award, it would start then. And then that would give us time to get all of our equipment and it would give us time to get all of our programs that we would need, like our computer systems that we would need and get the nurse line contract.
So the nurse line will be active at that time? So we'll set all that up between now and September?
We would start setting it up in September and then that would, when our time would start, we would take about six months to get that established then.
After that, okay.
Yes.
So out of the two years, we have about one and a half years of actual performance to wait how well this works and that type of thing.
Correct.
And I would assume around a few months prior to the end of this contract or prior to the end of this grant period, we probably want to come back together and discuss whether this should be something we would want to fund through our own budget at that time. I would be surprised if we let this expire and then start that discussion. So I would anticipate at least a few months, I'd say six months prior. So we may only have about a year's worth of data at that point. Is that right?
Yes.
Generally speaking, I think this is, you know, it's a positive program. I am concerned about the threat to our budget down the road. Right now, this is a grant and the primary beneficiary of this, I think, is Medicare or?
They're the ones that are funding it. It could really, the citizens are going to be the ones that are not being able, or they're getting help where they need it instead of having to go to the emergency room when they don't necessarily need it.
And I think in a roundabout way, if someone has a less expensive medical bill because they didn't have to be transported to the hospital, that's a benefit to the people that we're serving as well. And again, you said around 6% of the time, we won't have to do a transport, I guess. Those 6% of the cases, we probably won't even show up to the scene in those cases.
Right. We would, yeah, they wouldn't even get an ambulance sent to their residents.
Okay. Again, I'll support this today. I do think that down the road though, if this is 1.175 million dollars for two years, then I would anticipate, I guess, up to that number. It doesn't have to be exactly that number, but it's obviously going to be something. I am concerned about, you know, in about a year and a half from now, we're going to be having a discussion about extending this, probably in the 2023 budget, I would guess, whether or not we want to add another 1.1 roughly million dollars to our budget to provide something that has a 6% benefit to Sedgwick County government but has a maybe even greater benefit to the public and to Medicare. But I am concerned about our own budget because this would have, probably would have to be property tax dollars unless we can find another source of funding. So I am concerned about down the road. I'll support this today, but I am concerned about where this is going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think we're all concerned about the budget. As I said, so, okay, I don't see any other comments. I'll make a motion to approve the grant application and as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck. I hope you're one of the 40.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item T, approval of an agreement with the City of Valley Center and the City of Park City to fund construction of road and drainage improvements to West 77th Street North and Seneca.
Good morning, Mr. Weber.
Good morning. Just blew up my mask, so when I escape here without one, you'll know why. Jim Weber, I'm your Director of Public Works. Let's see if we can get, find it. Help me out. Where are we hiding it at, Akeem?
So Jim, I understand in grade school, you went by the word James instead of Jim?
James, yes.
Okay.
The nuns were definitely into the full name, so.
Well, I see on the agenda, you're going by James still.
Well, I left the Catholic school system and sort of shortened it, but I still have uncles that call me Jimmy, so.
All right. Just filling in time while we had to locate your present.
If we can't find it, I'll do without, so we'll just get started. You have the map in front of you. So we're here today to talk about a project on 77th Street North. Here we go. Great. Thank you. 77th Street North from I-135 west to what we know as the Chisholm Creek Crossing on 77th Street, just at the east of Valley Center. On the map, it's highlighted the Amazon site located at 69th and Broadway, just a big box a little bit to the south. This is going to be a two-phase project, possibly three by the time we get done, but right now, the phases are the red would be the first one we need to do, get 77th Street from the interstate over to Broadway, builds a big roundabout there to handle the truck traffic. And the second one would take off from there as soon as they can get it going and fix the connection all the way over to Valley Center. There's a little stub going north at Seneca. This is one of our, at 77th Street, if you cross the county, there's always an offset there. It's a correction line in the surveys. And so this would straighten that out. They'll take a little stub to the north on 77th so that when you got to Seneca, they would be opposing on each side the intersection. I guess I'll go back, the colors, try to highlight them. You've got kind of a gray, that's the Park City city limits. You've got a tan, that's the Valley Center. And then this other lighter color is still unincorporated Sedgwick County. And there is a portion of this kind of right in here where the whole road is still in the county and we butt it across these other two pieces as well. So partners in the project, Park City and Valley Center have managed to get an economic development grant from KDOT that funds a lot of this. Park City and Valley Center in Sedgwick County are picking up one-third of the remainder of the cost, equal shares. Kind of the impacts we're dealing with, Amazon's going to add an estimated 1,100 jobs to this region. If you figure a trip in and a trip out, that's 2,200 a day coming to the site and it's not all of them because there are vendors and contractors and people that need to come to facilitate that size to do business. And of course, we've got, I don't have the numbers, but we're going to generate a lot of truck traffic, if you can imagine. So the project funding, the total cost of the project's about $6.3 million. KDOT's economic development grant will reimburse $3.5 million, or about 56% of the project cost. The local share is $2.8 million, or about 44% of the cost. Again, the agreement has us in one-third. Park City and Valley Center will each pay a little over $900,000. Our $900,000 is split up between an in-kind match that we're going to provide, and I'll talk about that in a second, and then some cash that'll come from local sales tax, which is actually savings on previous projects that we've managed to save coming forward. So everybody's paying about 15% of the total project, the locals. So the in-kind match, we're going to provide construction inspection services for the road and drainage portions of the project. We're going to receive a credit against our share that's based on what this would cost if they had to contract for it in the private sector. We can perform the services at a lower cost than the private sector. Our overhead is lower. We don't need to generate a profit and we do have a lot of experience and our employees do very well at this kind of work. Phase one actually bids tomorrow. They're trying to start construction about June 7th. It should be done with phase one early to mid-October. Phase two, again, this has been kind of, I'll call it a little squishy. It's a very fast-tracking project, but they're still working on the phase two plans. We don't have the dates at this time, but the agreement does require that at the end of the project, Valley Center is going to either annex the pieces that are in the county or if there's a piece that they can't annex, they'll agree to maintain it going forward. We always like that provision. Seems like I had another slide, but I guess not. Do you have any questions about it?
I don't see any questions so far. Is there? Commissioner Howell?
I don't really have a question. I guess, maybe this is a question. This is a very, obviously a very mature project and it looks like there's a lot of urgency to get this done and that's fine. I think it's obviously come together very nicely. I'm just curious, I've heard that the trucks typically don't care for roundabouts unless they're very, very large. What's the size of this roundabout?
It's very, very large.
Very large, okay.
I can't tell you the number.
The small roundabouts are not great for trucks and they're good for cars, but trucks don't like little roundabouts and so this must be really suited for trucks, I guess. And so.
Yes, you can do, if you make them tight, they are a problem, but PEC is the designer on this one. We do know how to build a roundabout that works for trucks and it's, you know, it's not the little thing over in Delano. It's big.
Okay.
And it's designed for it. And that's kind of their controlling design thing, that roundabout and all that ends up in Park City. So we haven't paid a lot of attention to it, but our people have looked at the plans. We've done, tried to do rapid plan reviews for everything for constructability, make sure there's not many problems on our end of it, but it's a big roundabout.
I guess the final comment is, this, of course, is, this is not something that's been in our CIP or didn't come from WAMPO. This is something that's kind of came together because of the urgency, I think, that Amazon brings to the community. And these partners came up and found a solution outside those other normal processes. And so that's kind of where we're at. And that's, I guess, it's kind of impressive that we can pivot that way when we need to. So thank you for all your leadership and I will support the resolution. Thanks.
I should add, and it brings up a good point, there is a CIP amendment in your consent agenda package that you'll need to approve along with this thing to fund it, so.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Weber, for being here today. This has been kind of months and months of meetings about getting this together and this could not have come together without the leadership of City Manager for Valley Center Brent Clark, the City Administrator for Park City Sean Fox, also Lynn Packer, who works in our Public Works Department. So I appreciate his work on this and then the members of KDOT. You know, as you mentioned, this is going to be a massive influx of vehicles as Commissioner Dennis often reminds us now that David Spears is not here, is that roads are the mother's milk of economic development. This will be one of those that will certainly be in line with that. There's also safety concerns with the number of vehicles that will be flooded to this area because of Amazon coming in. So I'm excited about that. And then finally, you know, with Valley Center agreeing to take over the maintenance of what would be our road in the future. So there's a lot of really great things that are coming down the pike with this and I'm very excited that we were able to work as all four entities to get this accomplished. And Jim, we couldn't have done it without you, so I really appreciate your work on this.
Well, I could have done it without Lynn Packer and Dennis France, some of our people down the shop getting all the work done. And I will say, I almost put that quote in this slide deck, but I didn't do it. I will mention that Commissioner Dennis did use it in the last WAMPO policy body meeting, so it's a.
So it looks like he's going to be the one keeping it alive.
He is, yeah.
Yeah. So Chairman, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the funding agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
I'll second that. And I'll just comment that this, Commissioner Cruz, you're experiencing when communities come together to work together along with KDOT, it really comes up with a nice product and a shared cost and shared responsibility. And so those are positive things that happen in our area. So I'm glad you got to be a part of that and learn the cooperative efforts that, and Jim's got a lot of experience in that too over the years. So thank you for you and Lynn's and everybody's help on that. So there's been a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck with that project. Next item, please.
Item U, discussion of the federal legislative platform.
Okay.
Chairman, as we get started, Akeem will present, but on the phone, I just want to make sure he's here and have you acknowledge him. Jim Davenport, who is our federal lobbyist, I think is on the line. You might see if he's there.
Jim Davenport, are you on the line?
I think he's muted.
Jim Davenport, are you on the line?
I'm here. Sorry, I was on mute.
Thanks, Jim.
No, I'm on mute.
I can hear you.
Okay, Jim.[1680.16] Well, we can hear you, Al, so this is Pete Meitzner. Welcome again to our commission meeting and appreciate all you do, so we're going to review the federal agenda that you're familiar with. So thanks for being available for this call.
Absolutely. If you have any questions, just let me know.
All right, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Again, Akeem Asher, Communications Director. Just going to go over the federal platform agenda here, that's what you've got a copy of in front of you. Today, we're going to talk about the Northwest Wichita Bypass, the Amtrak Extension, the Dry Creek Overflow Detention Facility, the Health and Social Services, and then federal funding for county services. And so this will just kind of be a brief overview. There's more information in that packet that we did hand out to you. The support for the Northwest Wichita Bypass, this funding for the North Wichita Bypass, this project entails the construction of a new access-controlled highway from US 54 at the city of Goddard to K-96 between Tyler Road and Ridge Road at the city of Mays. It also includes the Dry Creek Detention Basin near 13th Street North and 167th Street West. It would extend the interstate-level highway system at Mays to West Wichita and Goddard. For that, again, Jim is on the phone for any questions, just kind of give you a brief high-level overview. This is, again, something that we did talk about during that budget hearing a couple of months ago as well.
Jim, do you have any comment on that one? Other than you're paying attention to all the federal opportunities?
I don't have any comments on it.
Okay.
If you were asking me, I'm sorry, I can't hear you all that well.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to speak more clearly.
Okay. Moving on, Chairman. The next item is the Amtrak Extension. This is asking for support of the extension of Amtrak service from Oklahoma City into Newton, Kansas. This is through the Heartland Flyer connects Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, to Fort Worth, Texas. At Fort Worth, connections are available to Dallas, Chicago, and San Antonio via the Texas Eagle. There is a map that is inside your packet, Commissioners. This is a 200-mile service gap which exists between Oklahoma City with the service connected through the Heartland Flyer and Newton. This is, this service will be serviced by the Southwest Chief, which runs from Chicago to Los Angeles, so that section just kind of helps fill in. Chairman, I know you've been intimately involved in this, we've had some conversations, and for any input, we have you as well, sir.
Jim, you just sent an email. You want to comment on the, we have fast-moving news all the time in the last 60 days or so, but Jim, you want to share the... Yep, please.
Yeah, so President Biden had a, it was, the 50th anniversary of Amtrak last Friday. He was in Philadelphia and has touted his proposal for $80 billion in his infrastructure plan for Amtrak. That is the humongous infusion of cash that they've been asking for, and part of that proposal would include the route that you're all interested in. So it's a really good time for that project, and obviously, we're going to push to make sure that funding is, is available. So that's my only comment there.
And I'll, I'll share with the commission and the public that there's been discussions with Amtrak that there is a sizable capital cost to do this between Kansas DOT and Oklahoma DOT, but the discussions have been pretty confirming that if this, if Amtrak does receive this funding to the size that Jim just mentioned, that they would use part of that to help, to actually pay for the cost at Oklahoma, ODOT and KDOT, which would relieve that, and the secretaries of ODOT and KDOT are in communication, along with some of all of us in the Transportation Coalition. So this could be really good news, and because it was going to be a sizable obstacle if we were going to have to fund it through the DOTs. So this is a very positive step that was announced, now that's if, if the transportation portion, if it passes. There's other parts of that, of that whole big package that a lot of people struggle with, including some tax increases and some other funds, so it's not, it's not done yet, but if it is done, a benefit of our community and our state would be the, the Amtrak portion that the, that the President announced this morning. I don't see any other questions or comments, so go ahead, Akeem, the next item.
Okay, Chairman. The next item we're asking for support on from our federal lawmakers will be funding for the Dry Creek Overflow Detention Facility. This is funding for a US Army Corps of Engineers feasibility study under the Continuing Authorities Program, CAP, Section 205 Flood Damage Reduction for that Dry Creek Overflow Detention Facility. The county would submit a letter to the district engineer requesting their assistance and determining if there is federal interest in this project. We've got Jim here as well, I know, to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Okay, I think Commissioner Dennis has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and I don't remember if Jim remembers when Commissioner Cruz and I were back in DC and we talked about these different projects, but the Dry Creek Overflow Detention Facility is really coupled to the Northwest Bypass, because if you recall, back in October of 98, we had Halloween flood, which flooded a lot, large part of, of Western Wichita and Sedgwick County. That was caused by a breakout of, between the Cowskin Creek and the North Fork of the Calfskin. But the solution to that is to put some kind of a detention facility out there. So we're going to have to excavate an awful lot of dirt in order to be able to do that. And what do we do with the dirt? We use it to build overpasses for the Northwest Bypass. So these two are really coupled, they, they work together very well, so as we're advocating for these, we need to remember that the Dry Creek Overflow Detention Facility and the Northwest Bypass are really coupled. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And Jim, before we move to the next one, if you have any other comments on that item?
Just a brief comment, it's probably time to renew a letter to the Corps about that. They would initiate the process with CAP, Continuing Authorities Program, and if there is an infrastructure package, the House Committee is to also put forth a large amount of money into the Corps of Engineers, so there's a possibility that if there's a large infusion of cash for the Corps, we might be able to move forward with that project quicker.
Okay, that's good feedback, appreciate it. So we will pay attention to that from our county perspective and even WAMPO perspective, maybe, so, okay. All right. Don't see any other comments, so next item.
Okay, Chairman. Next item has to do with Health and Social Services legislation. We'd be asking for support the county's health and social services needs, including legislation that addresses mental health access, that one, provides for coverage of marriage and family therapist services and mental health counselor services under Medicare, and two, authorizes marriage and family therapists and mental health counselors to develop discharge plans for post-hospital services. So that's the fourth item on, on your, on the list there. Not sure if Jim has any input on that.
Okay. I don't know for sure. I don't see any, go ahead, Jim.
Oh, I don't have much more on these. These are all issues we're tracking. I mean, there's been some, some information circled about surprise medical billing, but we're paying attention to all health-related issues that would be important to the county, and I'll always notify you if I think there's something you really need to be aware of that's moving forward. And if any Commissioners at any time have any questions about something specifically in this area, you know, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item, Chairman, funding for, go ahead, sir.
No, yeah.
Funding for county services, COVID-19 relief, and FY '22 federal appropriations. I know we were going to have a conversation here pretty soon during the state-local legislative process on a number of bills that we are tracking and working on. But this would basically ask for support for additional COVID-19 response and recovery legislation that provides direct federal assistance to all local governments and ensures such funding can be used to cover revenue losses. So this is a tracking of that, so.
Well, that's, there's quite a number of bullets on this, on this item. Jim, can I ask, are you aware of Treasury Department issuing their, their rules and guidelines on this next round of ARPA money?
Yeah, yeah, we've been on these weekly calls with National League of Cities, NACO. Treasury is a bit behind the curve, I think, but I believe the last I heard was May 11th, which would be next week, is when the regulations, I believe, are supposed to be posted. I'll probably have an update for that, maybe by the end of this week or early next week. So they're, they are working, what they're trying to do is put out one set of regulations one time, as opposed to what they did last summer when they kept updating their regulations every month based on questions from, from local governments. So they're, they're trying to get it right the first time, but that's, that's all I really have at this point.
And that's, that's interesting. Our CFO is nodding in approval if they just would issue one guidelines set, so.
Yeah.
We were, we all went through that this last year. Part of the presentation was, well, there's a new guideline that's out, and so it was a moving target, so. Well, that, that's a good explanation, okay. So Akeem?
And that is all, Chairman.
I think that's it. So if the commission is okay, we can vote to approve our federal agenda as presented and continue with Jim Davenport as our liaison and as our person in Washington. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Jim, thanks again for all you do, and we're, we're always a phone call away, and I know you're always a quick responder. I know that other Commissioners have appreciated your, your service to our, to our county and our city for that money, and the state. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I could stay out if there's any, anything else. Are we good?
Are we good, unless you want to, go ahead.
There's no other questions, I think we're good.
No, I think, no, we're good, we're good, Jim, so thanks.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, great.
Have a good day.
Absolutely, thank you all. Talk to you soon. Okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on April 29, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on April 29th, we have four items that we're seeking your approval for. Our first one is the IT, hardware, software, and various services for various departments, and this recommendation is to utilize the cooperating school districts of greater Kansas City, their Contract C 062518 with Converge One Incorporated, and this contract is good through June 30th of 2024 with options to annually renew. Item number two is dairy products for Department of Corrections, and this is, recommendation is to accept the bid from Highland Dairy Foods at the rates listed and establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number three is custodial services for the Department of Corrections, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from EH Technical Solutions Incorporated at the rates listed. This will be for contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. And our final item is window cleaning services for facilities maintenance. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from BMW Building Maintenance LLC, they're doing business as Squeegee Squad of Wichita at the rates listed, and the contract pricing will be for two years with three one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm looking at the third one, and it appears that the, the selected vendor for this is probably the most expensive out of the four bids. Do we know why we're selecting this one versus the other three?
Since this is a proposal, it allows the department to look at something other than just the pricing of the offering. There were other factors that were included in the proposal that allowed them to score points or award points, and so EH Technical was their, their choice. So a bid normally is just the low price, meaning specifications. When we're dealing with services, generally, we raise it to the level of a proposal, which allows cost to not be the determining factor, because that would limit their options in receiving the services.
And do we know about what we'll spend per year on this contract?
On this one, it looks like the annual fee is 15, let me look at that, it's a total of 29, it looks like about almost $40,000 annually. There are three different departments there, and then, of course, any of the other additional cleaning services, we're not too sure of, but as the needs arise, they'll have the option of using any of those other additional cleaning rates. But it looks like the overall initial fee is about $37,000, $38,000 yearly.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll trust the process here, but I, I don't know that I would agree with the rationale for picking this particular one, but I, I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts as presented. There's a motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Thanks, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item?
Consent Agenda.
Good morning. Commissioners Chairman, Tom Stills, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items W through AI.
Okay, does the commission have any items in the consent agenda packet? I don't see any comments, so I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items W through AI.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item?
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you received something from Justin Wagner on bills we were discussing yesterday at the staff meeting, Senate Bill 286 and House Bill 2313. Those bills actually yesterday were still being debated in the Senate, and as of around 6:30 last night, finally, both bills were passed. I believe House Bill 2313 passed the Senate about 33 to 6, and Senate Bill 286 was 26 to 13, I think. So it didn't pass for the same, same margin, but Justin's been following these two pieces of legislation. We met with Lindsey Poresso yesterday, and, and Tanya Cole and others, and put our heads together on the legislation to try to determine its effect on the county and the kind of position the county ought to take. And I'll let Justin go ahead and summarize some of his concerns with the bills, and essentially, this discussion can go anywhere you want it, want it to go. We, we didn't believe we had enough yesterday to really draft a letter. We're not even sure a letter at this point is necessarily going to make that much difference. But anyway, we'll throw this out for discussion and see what the board wants to, wants to do with it.
Okay, so House Bill 2313 was passed by the Senate?
Yes.
33 to 6.
Right.
And Senate Bill 286 was passed by the Senate, 2613.
That's what I believe, sir.
So does this, based on yesterday, does that mean they go to conference on this?
We're not sure at this point, because the House now, we didn't know as of just about 9 o'clock this morning whether they're going to be conference, go to conference. House Bill 2013 is already passed the House, obviously, so it's available for conference, but it could go back to that. It's never, the portion of the bill that we've been dealing with's never been considered by the House, so we don't know for sure what's going to happen with that. Senate Bill 286 could be conferenceable. I think probably our best guess this time is that probably we'll, we'll go to conference.
All right. Hi, Justin.
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. I'm a, I've provided to each of you a copy of a document entitled Concerns Regarding Senate Bill 286 and House Bill 2313. And to summarize it, as Mike was indicating, this involved our, our office contacting with county staff, in particular Lindsey Poresso, I think, was one of the main staff members providing input, as a lot of this gets into financial concerns, really. And so I'll go through the concerns and then be happy to stand for any questions. At the end, I'll kind of talk through, I guess, what options the, the board may have moving forward. I think it really is clearly at the will of the board as to where you may wish to go on this. On Senate Bill 286, and to, to just give a quick background, very quick, that's one where the, at least the impact of that bill that would apply to the county is that it was modified from what I presented yesterday morning to where the, the bill had 100% of the ARPA funding, the county, the county would get, being, being required to be put into an account. They amended that to 35% yesterday, so the bill that passed, 26 to 13, as Mike noted, was modified some, so 35% of what is estimated to be over the next two years, roughly $100 million, so it's, it's about $35 million. And what it would do is it would set up a three-member board with one member appointed by the governor, one member appointed by the Speaker of the House, and one member appointed by the President of the Senate, who would essentially operate without any transparency or public view, and review these claims submitted by businesses and decide how much money would be allocated on any of these claims, businesses that would have been subjected to the way the, the bill is drafted, they call them, I think, orders or, you know, closures and things along those lines. The, the concerns really that are, that are noted on this is that, you know, the Senate Bill 286 really contemplates the state intervening in a grant agreement that the county would have, or grant relationship between the county and the federal government. The ARPA laws, and I'm presuming how the guidelines would come out, and talking some with Lindsey, and I think also with national consultants, is that they're not going to contemplate states having a role in how municipalities would spend that money. So in this sense, really, the Senate Bill 286 is probably at odds with the federal legislation that's indicating how this money's to be spent. And Senate Bill 286 was not drafted in a way to where it would operate and function consistently with ARPA. So that, the reason that becomes potentially important, it gets down to kind of the second bullet point... So the reason that becomes potentially important, it gets down to kind of the second bullet point, is that it could, one of the things we're going to have to do when we get this ARPA money, and Lindsay can answer any questions on this, but there's very strict audit measures that we have to follow, and if we don't, and there's very strict procedures that we have to follow in expending those funds, considering how they'll be expended and that kind of stuff. If the county would follow Senate Bill 286 as it's currently worded, we wouldn't be following what the ARPA provisions would say. There's a conflict of sorts that's likely to arise. What could that mean? How could that impact us financially? Well, the ARPA Act, the ARP Act, would indicate that if you don't spend the money properly, as the Act contemplates, you could be, which is essentially, as Lindsay indicated, quoted as, or called potential misuse of the ARPA funds, we could be required to reimburse the federal government for that. So it's $35 million. Again, if we followed the Senate Bill 286 as it's currently worded, we could be on the hook for that money later, years down the road, potentially, but still, it would be $35 million hit potentially to our general fund, which is obviously a large financial risk. Some of the other concerns for the bill, I kind of hinted at this or noted it earlier, it would place an unelected three-member board acting behind closed doors in charge of determining how $35 million of taxpayer money would be distributed in Sedgwick County. This would be in stark contrast to the process that the county established, that you all established as, when there were over $100 million of CARES and Spark funding that were received this last year, in a process that was very transparent, involved community stakeholder and input. You know, where ultimately you, as the Board, as local elected officials, who are the people who I would say are best suited to make decisions on how to revitalize our local economy, were able to make those decisions. So I think there's an argument to be made that Senate Bill 286 is an inferior method of distributing the funds for a number of reasons. Senate Bill 286 would delay ARPA funding getting into our community until at least 2022. So none of the money would be, none of those $35 million would be able to be distributed this year, this calendar year. Also, based on the current wording of the bill, some of this is, admittedly, it's hard to read the two together, but if we're looking at some of the input that Lindsay's indicated and some of the, I think our consultant has indicated, if you tried to read these two bills together, really the ARPA funding and Senate Bill 286, Senate Bill 286 would say we'd have to put that 35% of the money in a fund. And so if we did that, then it also, Senate Bill 286 also says any distribution has to follow federal requirements and can't run afoul of those requirements. There's a major concern, as I've already noted, that expenditure of that fund could run afoul of that. And then Senate Bill 286 says that if you can't spend the money, you're not supposed to spend it until January 1st, 2023. And so the $35 million could just be sitting there. I think that's an unintended consequence of the bill. I don't think that was something the drafters intended, but it's a potential effect if you read those two laws together. I think there's, you know, I'm not saying that's a definitive conclusion, but that's something that could result. I don't think would be ideal in terms of trying to get this money into our community. Senate Bill 286 does not appear to recognize that ARPA includes targeted funding. And Lindsay can talk to this more specifically, but there are certain sectors of our community, business sectors, were certainly more highly impacted by COVID-19 than others. And there are large chunks of money that ARPA specifically designated, separate and apart from the money that maybe Sedgwick County, the city of Wichita, the state of Kansas received, that are designated for those types of businesses. And really Senate Bill 286 doesn't have a large amount of recognition for that, especially the 35% portion that's being talked about right here. So those, well, and then the conclusion there is really what's a possible cure for some of these concerns that have been raised. One way this could be resolved is be to delete Section 5 in the bill or remove it from the bill. That's the portion that deals with counties. That's the only portion that has to deal with us specifically. The bill also deals with how state money would be spent, how city money would be spent. And so now I'll move on to Senate Bill, I'm sorry, House Bill 2313. And on this, most of the concerns, well, let me first start off by summarizing 2313. There's kind of two different parts to this, and I summarized this yesterday, and they didn't really make any major substantive changes to this bill yesterday. The first portion, I'll just highly summarize by saying, I think it tried to focus on the industries that would have been impacted more. It limited who would qualify for relief in certain ways. It limited the amount of essentially tax relief that the county might provide to these businesses to up to $5,000 per business. And so there were some guidelines in place to, whereas a financial matter, it's not to say it wouldn't impact the county, but I don't think it would have some of the potential extreme financial impact that I'll summarize a little bit later. The part that would be more concerning, I think, as a financial aspect, is Section 15 of the bill. And this language is very similar to, and I'm forgetting the bill number right now. One of the other Commissioners, or Mike might be able to help me out, but there's one of the bills, or Section 7 of the bill, that was very similar, where it was kind of an open-ended, any business that's impacted in any way can get their tax, can get their entire tax, ad valorem tax payments refunded to them. And, you know, that could have a very significant budget impact on Sedgwick County. In particular, this portion of Section 15 would not apply until 2022. So it could impact your, and obviously you guys are in the process of considering, starting your budget hearings for 2022. And this could include a number of, a couple of different actions, including potential needing to raise taxes to make up for the budget gap for this, potentially having drastic reductions in our current services, or a combination of the two. And talking with Lindsay, the rough estimate for the budget impact of Section 15 on the county's 2022 budget could be between 25 and 50 million dollars. So that's, you know, that's not like, you know, that's a pretty significant chunk of money that you would have to make up in one way or another. Some of the services that may need to be reduced are vital to public safety, you know, whether it's EMTs, sheriff's deputies, our health department employees, you know, 911 call center, mental health professionals, these are all vital to our public health and safety. To the extent that House Bill 2313 would necessitate tax increases, the bills would prioritize awarding money to businesses to the detriment of homeowners. And property owners might have agricultural property, because they wouldn't stand to benefit from this, but would certainly stand to have to pay higher taxes. It's also worth pointing out that Section 15 in that bill is not merely a tax reimbursement, it's actually, I think, could be characterized as a penalty, because some of the money that the county would be required to reimburse out of our general fund is money that we never received. It's money that school districts, cities, townships, other taxing sub-districts, including the state, would have received. So this really is a penalty, and in some ways, it really has the legislature taking on the role of a court by doling out penalties to, in this case, the county. And then there's a laundry list of other things. I think that earlier portions of House Bill 2313 have provisions that kind of limit the claims that could be made that are not within Section 15. For example, as I noted earlier, portions limit which businesses might be eligible for relief, whereas Section 15 does not have any such limitation, so you could have big-box stores who may have not been significantly affected by COVID-19 being able to get a tax break under Section 15 of the bill. Also, Section 15 does not include a double-dipping limitation on businesses that may have already received large chunks of other funding, whereas earlier portions of that bill have that language. The bill operates retroactively to penalize counties that took action pursuant to our statutory duties, roles, and powers to address the COVID-19 pandemic. Building on that a bit, I think it's worth noting that House Bill 2016, which was passed last summer during a special session of the legislature, was enacted in part because of the view that these public health decisions should be made, not in a one-size-fits-all manner by the Governor, but on a local level. Sedgwick County and a number of other counties utilized those powers to protect our community, slow down the spread of COVID-19 within our community. Section 15 of this would retroactively penalize us, again with laws that were not in place when those decisions were made. So what are the potential cures on that? One would be to simply not enact the bill, or another would be to delete Section 15 in the bill, which is, I think, the most concerning from the county's standpoint and talking to finance staff. At this point, I mean, those are concerns. Obviously, it's to the will of the Board as to what action, if any, might be taken on this. I think there's everything from the continuum, from supporting either both of these bills to opposing them, either both of them. Or you could suggest changes to the legislature, or simply take no action. All of those are valid options. It's all completely at the will of the Board, and I would certainly defer to the will of the Board. And also, Mike Poon, in terms of any approach you may wish to take moving forward on these two bills, I'd be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, now, Mike, or I mean, Justin, do you have any idea, sometimes these kind of legislations is mirrored after something else that's gone on in another state. Is this something that they grabbed from another state, or is this something that they?
I'll do my best to address, well, Mike, did you want to go first?
Go ahead.
I'm not aware of anything. I guess I'll start off first by saying that I'm not aware of anything in other states looking exactly like this, or real similar to this. I believe Lindsay might be able to address, I think she's talked to some of our consultants nationally about Senate Bill 286, so I think she might be able to talk about that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Lindsay.
Lindsay Poe Russo, your CFO. So yes, to Justin's point, we have a weekly call with all three of our consultants, which, again, BKD is an auditing firm, a national firm, Whit O'Brien's, which has been kind of on the forefront, right, of CARES response, disaster recovery, and then DRS, which is also a disaster recovery service. All of these folks operate on a national level. All of them are very highly respected in the industry, and none of them have heard of anything like this. And honestly, when asked for advice, had very little to share, because it's just so outside of the realm.
That would be my assumption, so. Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. So as we talked about this yesterday a little bit in a staff meeting, House Bill 2313 obviously is further down the process than Senate Bill 286. But I guess I'm confident that all of this language is conferenceable, and one of these bills will end up in conference, one way or the other. So I think something's going to come out, but I think we need to speak to this as a commission. And the number of things in here, I think, that we ought to address, regardless of which bill is actually going to be conferenced, I think it would be smart for us to speak to a couple of these points. I think that it's extremely ironic that the point that was made a minute ago, that we would be having to reimburse funds that we never received, actually funds that actually benefited the state itself, the irony of that is obvious. And I would be shocked if they thought that was acceptable for a penalty to county government to have to pay for tax revenues that we never received that actually went to the state itself. To me, that's just blatant, that really sticks out, you know, stands out on the sheet. I talked to a small business just yesterday, and I had no idea how, you know, what the magnitude of the assistance that was provided to small businesses was. I didn't have an idea what the magnitude was, but this particular small business, I don't know what their revenue is per year, but they received a $600,000 financial assistance last year. Largely, that money has not been spent. It's available to be spent, but that's a lot of money, and I didn't realize it was that magnitude. I know we provided small amounts of money from the county, but the reality is, there's a lot of money out there. And to the extent that 2313 does not consider the financial assistance that's already been provided to these businesses, I think is, it sets these businesses up potentially to benefit in ways that they would not have benefited had this not happened to them. So I think it's, they're trying to sit them back up, you know, trying to provide, if you will, reimbursement because of unfairness of government burden being placed upon these businesses. But to not consider the financial assistance already provided is obviously a deficiency in this bill. So I think we should obviously speak to that as well. I think that the obvious thing that we ought to talk about is, if they come in and they provide, they direct $35 million on behalf of the county's ARPA money, then the liability needs to be shifted to the state. There's no way they should have the right to determine how to spend $35 million, and then we find out at some point that it did not meet the requirements of ARPA, and then put this back on property taxpayers here in Sedgwick County. That is, that's obviously an unfair strategy. So at least these three points ought to be made. In general, I do agree that the businesses that were not allowed to operate freely, and again, we could say maybe the public would not have visited these businesses and spent money the way they would have naturally, but nobody knows what would have happened had we not done what we did do. So, you know, the presumption is that these businesses were harmed, and yet they carried the burden of government in an unfair way. In my opinion, a violation of the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. I think that the premise of these bills is good. I just think that the application of the details of these bills needs to be addressed. So I'm not against what they're trying to do here, but obviously, they need to fix these bills before they pass, and I think we need to speak to it. So I would urge the Commissioners to support drafting a letter, but at least make those three points, and get that to the people who are likely to be on conference committee. And again, if it becomes a Senate Bill, 286, we certainly could be talking to the entire House about that bill, because we'll have to do this on general orders before it goes to conference. But I actually think they don't need to do anything on general orders to get one of these bills to conference at this point, so, thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin, as always, thank you for laying this out in an easy-to-understand way. I think it's important when, these are complicated matters that are getting passed and getting swept through pretty quickly. I think these are more than problematic. I am in 100% support of advocating for the citizens of Sedgwick County. It's important to understand that we're already behind the curve when it comes to payment of our employees, and to have to then cut services because of this would be absolutely devastating to response times to the public servants, you know, the more than 3,000 public servants that we recognize today. This would be really problematic for our community. The other thing is, you know, one thing I heard throughout the pandemic is those big-box stores who were raking in tons of money because our small businesses were shut. So, you know, we have that, I mean, that's just one thing that sticks out in, you know, a plethora of things. So I hope that we're able to get something drafted quickly. We can get it sent to all of them individually. If we can't have a conversation in person, this is pretty important. Mike, can you speak to, if this passes, what happens as far as the Governor's desk and that kind of thing? Can you speak to that?
Well, if they go to conference committee, which they likely will, then those conference committee reports would have to go back to each, the Senate and the House for passing. So we have a little bit of time to try to influence some of the legislators. And then it'll go to the Governor, and the Governor have the option to veto it. You'd need, they would need 27 votes in the Senate to override or veto.
And House Bill 2313 has how many?
Thirty-three, had 33 yesterday, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it wouldn't.
It wouldn't get over it.
Yeah, they would be able to override the veto, but you never know on something like that.
Commissioner Cruz, Chairman, something I might add in, and I know, I saw some of the hearing yesterday, I didn't catch all of it. One of the things, granted, it would depend on which of the legislators you'd ask about, but I don't recall there being really any discussion on Section 15 within House Bill 2313. And that's the, you know, they were talking about, the legislator who presented it was talking more about the stuff towards the start of the bill that talks about the limitations on certain businesses that were impacted more. So to your point about the big-box stores, I don't even know that the legislature was really considering how that could apply, or how this could apply to counties, what Commissioner Howell was talking about in terms of making us reimburse businesses for money we never got, essentially, which is a penalty. And so I don't think that was really part of what they were considering, or at least, now, some of the legislators made comments about wanting to inflict pain on local governments and things like that. So clearly, they, you know, but other legislators, I don't think they really even talked about that particular portion of the bill. And so, but as Mike noted, what, there were 33 votes there, but perhaps if some of this stuff would be made clear to, whether it's the House or the Senate, it might behoove the county just in terms of helping us make our position as to how this would impact us in our operations.
Thanks.
More questions? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry to speak again, but I guess I'd like to be clear, understand this a little bit deeper. There's a presumption of reimbursement, whether this comes from ARPA or not. So again, this idea that we could use ARPA money sounds like a convenient solution to the revenue that we might need to provide. But if this bill was to pass, ARPA money was not available, I believe it assumes that there's going to be reimbursement from the county regardless of whether there's ARPA funds available.
Let me, I'm trying to clarify, Commissioner Howell, which bill are you asking about in particular?
Either one. I think they both have the same problem. Either one. I think they both have the same problem.
I guess first, on Senate Bill 286, I mean, it's, it only allows the ARPA funding to be utilized if federal law would allow it. And then for House Bill 2313, I think Lindsey could probably better address than I could whether that, to what extent ARPA funding might be able to be utilized for that, and what we think the regulations will look like. So I'll let her speak to that, if she will.
Hello again. So Commissioner, on 2313, that Section 15 provision actually specifically says that the county treasurer shall reimburse the funds from the county general fund. So I think the law contemplates that the general fund would be used instead of ARPA. But even if we did substitute ARPA, one of the challenges that we've seen and we talked about is that a very specific provision in ARPA says it can't be used, basically to supply taxes, to do tax increases, or to do a tax cut, or anything like that. So my assumption is that in the spirit of that, and the guidance that comes out, we're going to have some real challenges about trying to use the ARPA funding if it's tied specifically to property tax reimbursement or anything like that.
Okay, in respect to 286, then, doesn't it have the same limitation? I mean, this is written in such a way that there's, I guess, some caveat that says the money would be allowed to be used that way, and that's what enables this bill to happen. But in light of, if it was determined that that money could not be used for that, then what happens to 286? Just the policy doesn't happen at that point?
Commissioner Howell, can you restate that?
286 has the assumption that ARPA money could be used this way, and again, I think it's to be determined. No one really knows for sure. But if it could be used this way, then 286 would have a determined use for that money. If it was determined that that money could not be used this way, is there still not a reimbursement requirement under 286?
286 does not create any reimbursement requirement outside of ARPA funding. So it would only be to the extent that that money could be utilized. It does not contemplate any other funds being used. Well, it doesn't specifically name ARPA, but it says COVID-19 relief funds that the county would receive from the federal government. So that's ARPA. But it does not require other payment. There were other bills earlier that did, that essentially were trying to, oh, I think, treat these as claims under the Kansas Emergency Management Act as takings. They've kind of backed off of that. I think there were some major flaws in that legally that they would have encountered. And so, they've still mentioned it some in the presentation yesterday, but have not framed it that same way in these two bills that we're discussing. It's not the same way. They have a little bit, but...
All right, thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Chairman.
And Mike, or Justin, can you comment? I believe that the Kansas Association of Counties is taking this on to try to help clean it up, I believe. And we've had communication with Johnson County that they're not taking a position, and I'm not aware that the largest city in the state, Wichita, is taking a position. Could you?
Well, and I'll, I mean, Mike can probably address the KAC and Johnson County better than I can. And I haven't spoken with anyone at the city of Wichita, but I don't think they're going to be impacted by these bills, because I don't believe, and I'm not their attorney, but I don't believe they've taken any action that would have either closed businesses or limited capacity in businesses, which seem to be kind of where these are focused. I mean, they enacted a mask ordinance, but I don't believe that rose to the level of requiring government to use either ARPA funds or to provide tax relief. And so I don't think the city of Wichita would be impacted by this because of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a conversation yesterday with Jay Hall, with the Kansas Association of Counties, their chief counsel and lobbyist. He indicated at this point in the session, since there's no testimony being taken, they're not preparing anything in written, I mean, they're lobbying against the bills. He provided some bullet points that he's talking about, but these are more or less contained in the bullet points that we've had. My contacts with Johnson County indicate that they're kind of sitting on the sidelines on this one.
Okay. Well, with it all being as wishy-washy as it can be, and without, you know, I don't know why we, I'm not in favor of putting our neck out there and taking the lead on this if nobody else is moving along with us. So that's just my personal feeling. They'll figure it out. They've made legislation before and had to come back in emergency session or the next year and straighten out their errors and omissions before. So it's just way up in the air, too much for me to help straighten out what they've done, as far as I'm concerned. So I don't know. We've had discussion about maybe a letter, and I feel like not being involved. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, without us being able to provide testimony, I think probably the most effective way to communicate with them, and I've already left a voicemail with Dan Hawkins this morning, is to communicate with the leaders that we know and explain what the concerns are directly with them. So I don't know that we would be effective whatsoever in sending a letter out up there at this point in time, whether they would really understand or have the time to review it. But I think personal communication would be a better option right now. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Chairman, yeah, thank you, Chairman. Do we know whether or not our lobbyist is supporting the county position on this, or a regional chamber of commerce position on this?
I've had some conversations with Mr. Watkins in the last couple of days. I don't think he clearly came out. He, and it's been such a confusing process. He remembered when the chairman was up testifying, I think it was Senate Bill 149, and maybe it was the House bill version of the same thing, which was, which is the language, Section 15, that we've been talking about. And that was, and at that point, the chamber was backing off of their position on support of that kind of language. But at the same time, he was mentioning that there was some discussion at that time that we might be favorable to using 25% of our ARPA funds in this manner. And I mentioned to Jason that that didn't necessarily mean that we would do it in, contrary to federal regulations or federal laws, it's just that we would be very receptive to reimbursing businesses probably, at least that's what the chairman was testifying to. But he qualified his testimony by saying he'd have to talk to other commissioners on it and get their feedback. The challenge at this point, as the chairman said, is coming up with a letter or a position at all, or three of the five, well, three of the five of you can only agree on something that doesn't have very much effect anyway. We really would need all five of you to agree on what points we're going to bring to the legislature, or the legislators. And I don't know that it wouldn't be as effective or more effective, as Commissioner Dennis said, for each of you to contact those people that you know, and make the points that you feel strongly about in opposition to these bills, and let them know, and lobby in that fashion. We're probably at that point. But I can certainly check with Mr. Watkins and see what he's intending to do with regard to this legislation. I didn't get a direct answer on whether the chamber was supporting these bills. I'm sure in some fashion, they're supporting at least some aspect of each bill.
I am pretty confident that they're going to, at least the chamber is going to be very much in support of these bills, as well as the Kansas Chamber. And they're powerful. These are powerful lobbyists. And so, these are obviously very popular bills. They have big numbers already, and nearly veto-proof, if you want to consider these numbers today. But as these bills move forward, you'll see, if they cross that threshold, you'll see a lot more legislators climb on board, because they want to be known for going against something that benefits business. And so, I do think that if they pass something, you'll see good numbers, well in excess of what we've seen so far in these early votes. But to the extent that KAC and LKM are going to be advocating, I guess, on behalf of municipalities and certainly on counties, my experience with them in the past is they simply just say, we don't like any of these, please don't pass them. I don't think that's an effective strategy or effective communication. I think what we should do is find out what specifically is our concern, articulate that, negotiate, compromise, and improve these bills. If we don't take a position that says, we understand the principle that you're trying to address with this legislation, but it needs to make sense. And again, some of these things in this bill as it's currently written don't really make sense. I think you need to pick those points out. I don't mind contacting the majority leader or the speaker and talk to, I can do that. In fact, I'm sure I will do that. But the body is hard to communicate one by one, when there's that many people who see this as a very popular policy. And again, so to effectively make change, I think we have to find a way to communicate to the mass, to the majority of the legislators, and certainly reaching out to some of the leadership positions would make sense as well. But I think we're missing an opportunity. If we don't engage some type of strategy here, we're going to get whatever we get. 2015 is a great example. They passed the tax lid. LKM and KAC simply said, please don't do this. And they passed it in very poor form. We had to spend 2016 fixing the bill, because they didn't do the job correctly in 2015. That's the kind of thing that happens when we don't speak to a bill. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I guess I'm disappointed that we don't know where the lobbyist who works for us sits on this issue. Can you answer that question, Mike? Are we going to have a conversation about the person that we've hired to be in Topeka, to be our voice, to share these concerns?
I mean, I don't know how to, I mean, I'm sure Jason would be more than welcome, or would be more than happy to address the commission, and we could get him on. Obviously, it's a very, very busy time up there right now, but we can get him on the phone and talk to commissioners, or you can talk to him individually and see how he feels about the bill, or how he can effectively lobby against it. I mean, I don't know. I guess I don't fully understand your question.
I think it's important, it's important for us to know where the person we pay to be a lobbyist and our voice in Topeka sits on this issue in relation to a conflict of interest with his other clients. That's important for us to know. As a point of clarification, Justin, I'd like to know, with SB 286, there is the three-member board acting behind closed doors to make these decisions. With HB 2313, where our, the CARES funding before, the board sat in this room, they discussed every single application, it was filmed, people could tune in to see what decisions were made. How, does HB 2313 address how the $35 million will be awarded?
Let me try to clarify a little bit. The $35 million for the ARPA funds was Senate Bill 286. And you're right, that's the one that has the three-member board. And it talks in really no uncertain terms about, I mean, this information is subject to higher standards of privacy than someone's protected health information or HIPAA. It's a very high standard. It says you can't even get it with a subpoena, you can't get it in a lawsuit, you can't, I mean, it's shielded under QARA. I mean, so there's very high protections there to that information being available. And so it's not a very open process. I think they did amend it yesterday to say that the amount of money that a business is given would be published, I can't remember if it was in the Kansas Register or somewhere, there was amendment to at least show the end result. There wouldn't be anything other than the end result, there'd be no showing of the work. Senate, or House Bill 2313 would have the Kansas Department of Revenue administer the claims. I don't believe it had, and Lindsey can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it had nearly the kind of robust provisions, and I think probably would be subject to QARA requests and that kind of information. That's the first portion of the bill where it's limited on the business type. The second portion of that bill, Section 15, dealing with the claims for property tax relief, and the part that's probably most concerning to the county's finances, would actually have the Board of County Commissioners make those decisions. I think that would, you know, I'm sure all five of you would be very interested if that bill would pass and having a transparent process through which that would be completed. And so there's not the same transparency issues with the House Bill 2313. But again, the Section 15 portion of that is probably the most concerning financially out of any of this stuff to the county. I would hazard to, I see Lindsey nodding her head. So, does that help answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other, I personally agree with what Commissioner Dennis said. I think we each have our own groups of contacts that can be of influence, especially at the leadership positions in various committees. And I think we ought to all try to keep our ear to the ground and talk to the ones that we know, and express our concerns. And this thing changes all the time. So I'll entertain a motion about a letter or something, but I'm not, I'm going to be in favor of what Commissioner Dennis has already done, as we talked this morning, and continue to do. So has anybody got any other questions, comments, motions? I don't see any, so I guess we will receive this presentation, and we will continue to, please update us hourly as this thing goes through.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay, anybody have a committee report?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to say thank you to Tim Kaufman and Mark in our Parks Department. They came out on Sunday to Sedgwick County Park with the Youth Arts Council and the Mayor's Youth Council to discuss a potential mural. We're going to color up some of the buildings with some murals at Sedgwick County Park. There is a process that we will be going through, so it will, it will have the same process that all the other projects, and so it will come before the commission. But I'm really proud of the students who came out. We had Jonathan, Esther, Rachel, Madeline, and Leah, I do not know their last names, but they came out and spent about an hour this past Sunday at Sedgwick County Park to decide and to explore what opportunities could be out at the park in regards to some murals. So that's pretty exciting, and I thanked Tim for showing up on a Sunday afternoon. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Any other committee members, or board members? Okay, next item, please.
Other.
Other. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several things today, actually. You know, we recently changed our comprehensive plan in our zoning, dealing with wind and solar. And we support solar energy. And the nice thing about it, we've got two projects that are just completed here in western Sedgwick County that are put on by the cooperative over in Cheneau. And on May 27, at 10 o'clock in the morning, over in Cheneau, they're going to have a flip the switch to activate those two solar farms. That is great, I'd love to attend. But also, on May 27, at 10 o'clock, we have the ribbon cutting for the zoo at the exact same time. So I'm kind of torn on where that I want to be, because I want to definitely support the solar energy and the things that they have done there. While I'm talking about solar, the other day, a week or so ago, I got a notice from Lisa and Carol, and said, hey, Next Era wants to meet with you. And I kind of worried about Next Era meeting with me when I first heard about that, because they're the ones that are putting, wanting to put in the wind farms over in Reno County. But I said, certainly, I'll meet with them. And it was a great meeting, actually. What they're looking at are two large wind farms, or solar farms, rather, in Sedgwick County that are huge. I'm talking five square miles. And so, there is a possibility that we're going to expand, and the nice thing about it, they're looking at putting one of them over by Colwich to hook into the power plant there, and one of them by Mount Hope to connect into the Buffalo Flats grid up in that area. So I think that there's a strong possibility that we can start increasing our solar footprint here in Sedgwick County. So I appreciated both of those events, and I'll keep you informed as I hear further. After the meeting, I did get ahold of both the Next Era representatives and ask if they'd like to brief my Citizens Advisory Board, hopefully in June, so that we can get the word out on what's going on there. Another great thing that's happening is that we're going to do a ribbon cutting someday on Fire Station 31. And I just got briefed by Tanya Cole recently that we're close to getting the data in. We don't have an exact date yet, but hopefully in the very near future, we'll be able to do a ribbon cutting on Fire Station 31. There has been some interest from the news media, because our existing fire station out in Andale is very, very, very small, and we can't have female firefighters in that out in Andale is very, very, very small, and we can't have female firefighters in that facility. And that has raised some interest, because our new facility, we can have female firefighters in it. So what, what the news is interested in is showing that we're now completely integrated once we, we get that going. So there's a lot happening in District 3. I just wanted to bring everyone up on a few, up to speed on a few of the great events that are coming up in the very near future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I've got a couple announcements, but I'll let Mr. Howell, you want to go first?
Either way, Chairman.
Okay. Well, I just, I just want to point out to the, to the public that Death by Chocolate is this Saturday at Exploration Place. It's always a big event, and it's kind of fun that people are going to get out again. And our Wind Surge baseball team, their first game is Monday at, at home. They've already played a game yesterday and won that game, and so the first, and then finally, for me personally, we, there's a, there's another day, Sunday, it's called Mother's Day, and we have a couple of commissioners that are mothers, and we have many that work here. I just want to wish everybody a very happy Mother's Day. So, Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Chairman. Actually, I was going to mention Mother's Day as well, but thank you for mentioning that, and I agree that it's, it's a great time to celebrate mothers, and I know many great mothers in, in my circle of family and friends, and so I just want to say I appreciate all of you for what you do. I have two other issues. One of those is, I wanted to highlight, this will be my third cab, Citizens Advisory Board number five for, for the fifth district. We'll have its third meeting. It's fairly new board, so here, we're still getting used to this, but it'll be at 1301 East Galena at 3:45 this week on Friday, May 7th. So if anybody's interested in attending that, it'll, it'll be about an hour and 15-minute meeting, and you can check on my, check on the county website for a copy of the agenda, or contact me directly, and I'll, I'll be happy to send that to you. So I'd like to just encourage the, the community to know that District 5 does have a cab board meeting, and it's active, and they're having their third meeting this week. Second of all, we just got our copy of our budget book. Here it is. It's pretty big. I know Lindsey's done a lot of work, and Finance has done a lot of work, and Tom, you've done a tremendous amount of work on this, to bring this to us. But one of the things that's in this book that caught my attention was, we have a bit of a change in the way we're doing our public hearings this year. And I know, maybe this is, is a result of pending legislation, maybe that's what's causing this to happen, I don't know. But I, I, I am concerned. In the years past, going back at least, I think since the beginning, when I, when I first became a commissioner in, in 2015, we shifted one of the public hearings to the evening and made it a different day than a Wednesday. So we, people would have a choice, because maybe, maybe Wednesdays are bad for people, I don't know. But in this particular case, right now, our, our tentative plan that's been listed in the budget book shows that we have, our first public hearing is on Wednesday, July 21st, at 9:00 a.m. here in the boardroom. And that's not a good time for lots of people to get here. Maybe they can, but I'm, I'm concerned that maybe, this may be problematic for some people. And our second, but, our second public hearing is scheduled currently for August the 25th, essentially a little bit more than a month later, again, on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. I'm concerned that I think we need to be more available to the public, and I would like to see us at least insert, if you, either change one of these, and by the way, 8:25 is also the, the same date we plan to adopt the budget. So to me, this is a bit disappointing. I would like to propose that we would add another, another public hearing earlier in this process, and should be an evening, so that the public has access to the commissioners to, to bend our ear on what they want us to do with their money. So I just throw that out there. I think we need to, to go back to what we've done before. I think it's a better plan. I can tell you that some years, we get a lot of, a lot of input, some years we get very little input. But regardless, I think we need to be available to the people on how we spend their money. And I think for, for doing this on Wednesday, and then a Wednesday, both, both times at 9:00 a.m., and the second one of these, coupled with a budget adoption, in my opinion, has not given us time to respond to the comments we might hear at that meeting. So I just want to express that. I, I think that this is a bit disappointing, I think we can do better. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Don't see any other comments under other. So if there's no other business, I don't think we are at the end of the commission meeting, so we will adjourn the, I know, but we got to, don't we adjourn this one and then go to fire?
No, just recess.
Recess this one. That's the word. Sorry. Okay. We'll recess this, the board of commission meeting, and we will call to order the governing body of Fire District Number 1. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't think we had anybody comments on public agenda, both, nobody signed up, and we didn't receive any emails. So there was no public agenda. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of March 10th, 2021.
Commissioners, you've received a copy of the minutes of March 10th meeting. Any corrections, additions? Being none, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve March 10th minutes. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call out.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Next item, please.
New business. Item B, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on April 29th, 2021.
For the record, Joe Thomas, purchasing director.
Hi, Joe.
Almost good afternoon. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, April 29th, in consideration of Fire District Number 1, we have three items for you. The first item is two each of the 2022 four-wheel-drive crew cab staff trucks. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Don Hatton Chevrolet. It's in the amount of $68,800. Item number two is the 2022 four-wheel-drive dual rear-wheel, standard cab brush truck. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Rustiac Ford, and that's in the amount of $56,006. And the final item we have is the 2022 four-wheel-drive dual rear-wheel crew cab fire squad truck. And that recommendation is to accept the low bid from Rustiac Ford, and that's in the amount of $85,678. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions about these items? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve the Board of Bids Contracts for the Fire District. A motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Thanks, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent item C. Is it Charlie?
We have consent item, one consent item, C. Anybody have any comments, or being none? I'll make a motion to approve consent item C.
Second.
Second. Don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
I don't see any other, and if there's any other business from the commission on the Fire District, I don't see any, so we will adjourn the Fire District, and we will come back to the county commission meeting. We don't need to recall the roll or anything. Okay. So we're back at the county commission meeting.